Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Wednesday, June eighth, two thousand and eleven, meeting of the school committee. This is our second of three consecutive meetings that will be starting at six o'clock because of the lengthy agenda. And I like to have all our principals in bed by ten o'clock to make sure they're fresh for the next day.
All us old guys.
You have the seven forty-five time. Later on in my report of the chair, I will be going over the superintendent's contract. Dr. Rabinevich and I signed off on it yesterday at about four o'clock, so I'll give anybody an overview. And like anything else, anyone who wants a copy of that, they can go through the procedure to request a copy of the superintendent's contract. And if you're into that, then I suggest you get one of the town administrator, police chief, anybody else that you want. Public participation? Anyone like to address the committee at this time? Here or none? Good news. Dr. Rabinevich, we'll start with you.
Thank you. And I'm sure I probably echo for the committee how nice it was and what great news it was to go to both the Cooperative Junior-Senior High School graduation, as well as the Wareham High School graduation, and the senior awards evening. All three events were done very well, and it was great to see families together celebrating Rite of Passage. And I brought with me, just, and I'll give you not all of the details, but from the scholarship evening, which was the senior awards banquet, it wasn't a banquet, excuse me, but the awards evening, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars were given out to our seniors attending college this fall. And that has been consistent as long as I've been in Wareham, and I think that's phenomenal. Many of our young people will have a good portion of their college education paid for next year because of all of these, and that's great. And it's because of the generous nature of this community. So I think that's great news, and thank you.
Rhonda, anything?
No, I was gonna mention the same thing, how great it was to attend both Cooperative and High School graduation. There's a lot of great speeches and a lot of excitement for both of the schools. Also wanna mention that I attended the Hammond Field Day this week with my son. It was, it's a great opportunity for parents to come and watch their kids run around and compete, and everyone got a ribbon, and it was great to lead one of the areas and get to know some of the kids there and also some of the teachers. And a lot of parents showed up, which is great. Hot day, really hot day. But it was just, it was a great event, and I know that there's field days that are going across the elementary school, so I just wanted to mention that. And then also, Go Bruins at eight o'clock tonight.
Cliff?
Oh, just to build on what you said, just for those that probably don't realize it, that two hundred and twenty-five thousand is what we talk about local scholarships. You know, so on top of that two hundred and twenty-five thousand, our kids have done very, very well in getting financial aid and scholarships and grants from the colleges and universities that they're attending. So, I mean, you put them all together, we're talking about a very healthy package for our kids. And many, many of our kids certainly can help, can use that help. So again, a very generous community. And I know for one, I've been here for a long time, and I can't, I can't even begin to tell you how generous this community is, not just in terms of scholarships, but anybody that's in need, this community just seems to arise to the occasion. It's a wonderful, wonderful town. Thank you.
Thanks. Jeff?
Oh, just to piggyback on that statement, I was lucky enough to coach the girls tennis team at the high school, and we just finished our awards dinner an hour ago. And I had four seniors on the team, and I asked the four seniors what it was gonna cost them on an annual basis to go to their schools. They're all great kids, bright kids, all going off to college, and I think they'll be immensely successful, thanks to a great extent, and I think they would have given credit to Wareham High School for this. But the average cost was forty thousand dollars a year. So, I mean, two hundred and twenty-five thousand is amazingly wonderful. It is much, it's my understanding, Dr. Rabinevich, that's much greater than most communities give out, but just, you can see at forty thousand dollars a year, it's so desperately needed.
Well, so Jeff?
Yes.
Rachel? It's good news you're here.
I'm thinking of.
Yeah. Very good. Minutes of the meeting of May twenty-fifth. If there aren't any corrections or changes to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to accept them as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those five zeros early. Jessica?
Hi.
How are ya?
I'm doing very well.
Good. Tell us how you're doing. School was unwinding and?
Oh, well, everyone's excited for summer.
Okay.
Obviously, not so excited for finals week, but I think that's a given. And I just wanna announce that the awards night for the current freshman, sophomore, and junior class will be tomorrow night, which is the ninth, at seven P.M. There will be a junior class field trip to Six Flags this Saturday, and we want those attending to be there at nine thirty, 'cause the bus is scheduled to leave at ten, and we wanna make sure we have all the people there. Don't wanna leave anyone behind. And then also, our junior class elections are this Monday. And June fourth, we will be welcoming the eighth grade up to the high school for their Step Up Day, and that is next Tuesday, June fourteenth, sorry.
If you didn't know, Cliff Sylvia is actually the Six Flags dancer, so I'd be happy to go on that trip with you.
Um, I missed on the good news, it was a pleasure.
He's a very funny guy.
Oh, the dancer?
You know, since we've gone live TV, you've really found your niche, haven't you?
Thank you.
You're gonna be on Comedy Central pretty soon, huh?
That's tomorrow night.
It was a pleasure to sit at awards with Jeff Swett, because he was so proud of the tennis players. And we actually played a game as they came up. He said, "Guess the tennis player," and I went, "Oh, for four." But, which, which is great to show that some of the kids, you think they're not athletic, they're out there, and, and I think it was wonderful. I'm not gonna mention any students, because they all deserve the credit, but for someone to be involved in athletics, find time to study, be on so many committees in the school, and-
Class president.
Class president, and receive, I can't count how many scholarships, is absolutely fantastic. So, I wanna give you your credit, because I'm sure along with tennis coaching, there's some tutoring going on there, so nice job.
Are you kidding? These are just wonderful kids, and I just am lucky to get 'em. They're already wonderful when I get 'em.
Good. School improvement plan, I believe, Minnet, Hammond, and East is up first, doctor? Is that correct?
That is correct. Joan Siemens is gonna come to the podium. Her school improvement team, her school council, will come up and have a seat. I see she has some supporters in the audience.
Go Minnet!
Just before she starts, to the committee, I just, I wanna say, as you're all aware, we have changed our format on our school improvement plans. And it has been a work in progress. We came up with, Mr. Lozan helped me, and came up with a new template where we download data from DSSY and populate, so that everybody has the same data sets in their plan. But what we learned at our last meeting is that when you then put it up on the screen, they don't show very well at home to the TV audience. So, we tried today, there was a lot of last minute work behind the scenes, trying to make it to twenty-four font, so that they could be seen at home. It did not work on Joan's, because she's using the template that has parameters enabled, so we couldn't change it. It did work on Chris's, because she broke the mold and kinda did her own rather than the template. And so, we are getting there. This is my walkway of saying, we're learning as we go, and I sent the thing to the middle school and high school principals today, saying, "Yes, we have this plan, that is the template we will do, but perhaps we will then make a PowerPoint that they will populate with certain data from this plan, so that it will be more receptive to the viewing audience." And we just didn't wanna confuse people by having a PowerPoint and the document, but, so please bear with us as this is in transition. So with that, Joan?
Please. So, I think I'll sit here and face you, since I'm presenting my plan to you. I'll just get my chair just situated a little bit in there. Yes!
I'll make sure I keep my questions down, so you can make everything again.
The easiest thing to do would be move the table, but that's okay.
I did try to do the twenty-four font presentation, and my main document is twenty-three pages. The presentation was coming out to be sixty-six pages, so that wasn't going to work. So what I have done is I've just-
Well, we started early, it's okay.
I've extracted some of the key data from the main plan, and that's what I'm going to present on the screen for you. And I did increase the zoom to about a hundred and twenty-five percent, so it is a little bit bigger than the normal font. So, we're trying different things this evening. Before I begin, I just wanna thank Jerry Young, who's here for my school council, and Ann Cody. And also, I have some teacher support and the audience, Mrs. Lennon, the art teacher. I have Mrs. Fitzgerald, my third grade teacher. And thank you to Mr. Paling, who's here as my assistant principal. He's doing double duty, a little bit of this, and then he's going to enjoy his son's band and chorus concert at the Deacon School, so I thank him. So, as Dr. Rabinevich said, a lot of these charts we pulled right off the department's website. Some of them, the data may be a year old, and some of it is current, and some may have changed from as of June eighth today. So we have enrollment data that was as of December first, and it shows the numbers of students that we have. And of course, with three elementary schools, I have to do a lot of these things three times. So the first particular chart, I had to populate on my own, because it wouldn't fit in nicely into this little box here. But it shows you the enrollment. So for pre-k to five, as of December first, it was seven hundred and sixty-one. As of right now, it's seven hundred and ninety-six. The difference is preschool, 'cause after children turn three, then we have to provide an education for them in the public school if they've been identified for services. So a lot of those numbers are preschool related, 'cause at the time, we had eighty-four students in preschool, and right now, we have a hundred and sixteen, so it's doubled. So that's why we have an increase there. As far as an impact statement, and that's another thing that I'll be going through, is we look at this presentation. The reduction of staff due to budget cuts has created the need of reassignment of teachers based on enrollment, which I'm using my current numbers. The enrollment at Minnet Forest has remained constant, and the space constrictions in the bit, in the building continue to be problematic. So, I had three cuts that I made because of budget cuts, and I had to eliminate the T-1 program, you'll most likely see that later coming up, and reassign that position because of enrollment purposes. We have attendance and discipline data. The average rate of attendance, the students, is ninety-four point six days. The average number of days absent is nine point three. No child left behind. You have to be there ninety-five percent of the time, so you shouldn't have any more than nine absences, so we're right here at the cusp. In-school suspension rate is one point seven percent. Out-of-school suspension rate is three point seven percent. And then our retention rate is two point seven percent. That's from Minnet Forest. When you look at Hammond, the attendance rate is ninety-four point seven percent, average number of days absent is nine. And East is always difficult, because you have children that are there, two, two days, three days, four days. But we still maintain the data, ninety-three percent for the preschool students, average number of days absent, nine point nine. And some of these children have some medical issues and a lot of medical appointments, so that contributes to the absence. Also, for the years that this data came from, the two thousand nine, two thousand and ten school year, attendance significantly declined, because at that point, we had the H1N1 illness, and it affected Minnet Forest a great deal, as far as staff and students. We've had some other medical illnesses to students, some, some long-term. We've had some fundraising last year and this year, because of some real significant medical needs for some of our students. Other factors that contribute to attendance rate are students with excessive unexcused absences or absences due to family vacations during school time. We try the best that we can to monitor attendance. We send out letters, as required by mass general law, anytime a student reaches seven absences in a six-month period. Sometimes we have to take other action with families, if they have attendance with their children, that is excessive. Twenty, thirty, forty days is excessive. And sometimes that comes back when we have to look at placement for the following year. So we do what we can to try to address this, but it does affect the overall attendance rate. And the addition of detention at Minnet Forest has provided an additional consequence, if we need it, as far as the discipline data is concerned. The teacher data, again, this is as of December first. The total number of teachers at Minnet Forest was forty-three point eight percent. I always love these point eight. I don't know who we're gonna call the point eight person. And the student-to-teacher ratio, this is really misleading, it's thirteen point six to one. You won't find a classroom that has thirteen or fourteen children, but they look at all the staff that could possibly be in the building, and when you divide that by the number of students you have, it comes out to thirteen point one. So you're looking at OT, the occupational therapist, the physical therapist, the speech and language person, paraprofessionals. So it's a little misleading, so I just wanted to point that out. For Hammond, we have nine point one teachers, student-teacher ratio, teachers, yeah, student-to-teacher is seventeen point one. East Wareham, six teachers, student-teacher ratio to the teacher is eleven point eight to one. As far as staff attendance, we also noticed a decline during the two thousand nine, two thousand and ten school year, again, due to H1N1, and we had some other short-term medical leaves of staff. And the total number of days absent are monitored throughout the year, so the secretaries do keep a detailed account of absences. Student performance data, I know we went through this in the fall when our MCAS data came out, this is not the current MCAS data that we just took in March and May, this is last year's data. So this is a review. For Minnet Forest, our improvement rating for English language arts, we are on target. For mathematics, for our subgroups, we didn't have any change in our improvement. And you'll, there'll be another chart that you'll see. AYP was made for English language arts at Minnet Forest in all the categories, so we were very proud of that. We need to make, improve AYP for a second year, which will come from this year's data. And once you can make improvement for two years in a row, then you come off the improvement status, and you go back to no status. So that's what we are striving for. For math, we did not make AYP in our categories. We were identified for improvement year one for subgroups only, not every, not all of it, just the subgroups. We feel that the implementation of RTI, which is Response to Intervention, that we are doing next year, will provide additional resources to improve student achievement. The new Everyday Math Program has generated positive results to date to help improve student achievement, and I'm hearing great feedback from the staff members who are using Everyday Math. As they're doing some practice, MCAS questions, they're noticing that the Everyday Math has prepared them a lot better than our former series, the investigation, so they're excited to see the difference. Parent and community involvement data. As you can see by the various titles, we have parent advisory functions, and the various ways that parents contribute to our school. We have school council members. We have parents that serve on the policy review committee. We have a parent surveys that we did this year. We had a committee for the bully prevention. We had a revision of the school improvement plan, which is the current template that we're using. Community relations committee, that I believe Rhonda, you spearhead. The Wareham Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, we have a playground committee for our East and Hammond, and we have a wonderful PTA. Those are just some of the main functions that parents play an advisory role. For volunteering, we have parents in classrooms, they chaperone field trips. We have parents that help out with destination imagination enrichment program that some of the children participate in. We have our Blasphemy to Books program that the PTA does, and we just had awards last week and this week. Today was first grade awards for their reading program, where they got a certificate, they may have received a medal, depending how many times they went around the world. They had T-shirts that they received, trophies. There was a class party for the class that read the most minutes, so it was really a great awards program. Math wonders is the same type of thing. Once students do a lot of additional work with math at home, and they turn in their logs, they participated also in an awards program. Last year, we had our art auction, we're hoping to continue that next year. Every year, we like to do International Night, where we have families come, and they celebrate their heritage. And every year, it gets larger and larger, so that's a wonderful evening. The nurse participates in the fluoride distribution, and we have parents that help with that. They go to the classrooms and they distribute fluoride, based on parents' permission and signing up. They've done movie nights, bingo for book nights, reading Caterpillars, and reading Safari. So a lot of ways that they volunteer, and this is just even a small portion of what they do. For community partnerships, we partner with the PTA, parents serve on interview committees. We've had Papagino's fundraiser night, where you can go, you purchase food at Papagino's, they give us a portion of the sale. Cozy has done the same thing, as well as Chili's has done that. Reading is fundamental book distribution. We raise money through the Dick Maloney Foundation at East and Hammond, and that allows us to purchase three books for every child that we can send home throughout the year. We have a fire safety program. We participate in the band and chorus concerts that we involve in community. The PTA has a holiday breakfast, where we invite people to come in. We have book fairs, and again, our art auction is in this column as well, because we have several community members that will submit art work to be auctioned off. For methods of communication, we have parent conferences at the school. We use WCTV cable TV, which is taping us this evening. The school website is another way to communicate, we try to update that as much as we can. We use our Global Connect phone system. We have email. I do a monthly newsletter that goes home to families, it's also on the website. Orientation nights at the beginning of the year for families. We have open house. Teachers have their own newsletters, and some have their own websites. For new students coming in, we have entrance materials for them. Title One puts out newsletters for families. PTA puts out a newsletter to keep parents informed. And some other ways that they participate, as Rhonda said, was field days. We were very fortunate at Minnet Forest, we ended our field days as of yesterday, so we beat the heat. We just had one day that we listened to the weather forecaster, who said it was going to be storms in the afternoon, it was a beautiful sunny morning, everybody came, and then it started raining at ten o'clock in the morning. So we did have to postpone that one to this past Tuesday, but great weather for field days this year. And you cannot get into Minnet Forest on field day, because there's nowhere to park. Grade five award ceremonies, that's happening tomorrow, so we're looking forward to that. PTA did their reading and math awards, and Mrs. Weatherspoon, my paraprofessional, does a Step It Up dance program, and she has students that volunteer to come, and it's a wonderful dance program that she does with them. There are lots of other community events that are here for you to see. We had Gary Burbank come this year from WBZ to the fifth graders into the program. So based on all that, parental and community involvement plays a critical role in the child's education. It provides a true partnership, which explores resources to support the expected achievement of all students. We have a strong group of parents who are committed to helping in the schools and participating in various committees. The support of the community is listed, as listed above, is valuable and contributes to the success of our programs. We can't do a lot of these things without the community's support and without the donations that they give up. It helps with the enrichment program. Extracurricular activities, we have the activities listed that you see on the left and the number of participants on the right. I won't read them all for you, you have them in front of you, but I would like to just point out, John Brook for Hat, we raised eight thousand, three hundred and one dollars and eighty-nine cents this year, so that was wonderful to see. The punt, pass, and kick that Mrs. Temple also does, there were five hundred and thirty students that participated, so that was quite a lot. International Night, again, we had about a hundred and fifty participants, and each year that grows. And due to the earthquake in Japan, the music teacher, Mrs. Tanzi, had students create origami cranes as part of their culture. So the students made the cranes, we raised money, and that was sent to American Red Cross for the purpose of Japan, and five hundred and twenty-nine children participated in that, so we were proud of that. We have a wonderful community that when there's a need, whether it's another country that has had some type of devastation, or we have our own students in school that have some significant illnesses, the community really comes together for them, so we're proud of that. Multicultural programs lead to an expanded understanding of various cultures, and every year, we expand that with our International Night. And then the academic programs that we have provide additional support and enrichment as students, to the students, as indicated by the number of participants that you see there. With a strong focus on academics, we have not lost the importance of extracurricular activities. Students love intermurals. Last night, we had the Minnet Forest Band and Chorus Concert, and I have to say, it was one of the best performances I've seen, because we had soloists during that particular performance, and they performed more songs and played more songs, so that was a great evening last night. We have done various things for professional development, which is listed in the plan. It's important to have professional development, because we need to update staff on new regulations that come out, such as the bullying law, provide assistance to any new programming, such as the Everyday Math Program that we had. We had six plus one traits writing last year, we provided professional development to them, and this increases the staff skills in instruction. The bullying training gave a clearer understanding regarding the law, reporting procedures, not just for staff, but for parents as well. All staff also in April received an overview of the Response to Intervention training, and that's going to provide the background for the next two years as we roll out Response to Intervention. At Hammond, we participated in the NIAAC training, the National Association for the Education of Young Children. Very involved process. Very proud to say that Hammond was accredited this year for another five years, and we are in the process of going through the NIAAC accreditation at East Wareham School, and we know that the validators will be here by November thirtieth. So anytime from now to November thirtieth, they can show up and look through all the work that we've been doing. So I really have to credit Mrs. Ames for taking the lead on the NIAAC portion of it. Diversity, the initiatives that we have that are listed in the plan allow all students the opportunity to access and progress through the content area curriculums by meeting the diverse learning needs of our students. When we look at the survey data, I just kinda pulled out some of the data that really stood out to me. And this year, we sent the surveys to all families. They were able to access the survey data through Survey Monkey. In the past, we've done a random sampling to about twenty percent of our population, and we got maybe eight percent of the surveys back. So we tried something new this year. We put it online, and we allowed all families to take the survey. Staff also took the surveys by Survey Monkey, and for students, we had them do the paper and pencil test. So there's some interesting data that came from that. For parents, the majority of them are satisfied with school safety and security, school discipline, the promotion of respect and understanding of people with diverse backgrounds, school enjoyment, staff assisting and encouraging students to achieve goals, and the feeling of being valued and respected by all staff. Areas that we wanna strengthen, according to the parents, are children feeling valued and respected by peers, and being challenged academically at school. So those are the two items that came up from parents. So those are the two items that came up from parents. The majority of staff are satisfied with school safety, school discipline, school culture, and the work by the PTA. And these, when you look at the percentages, they are ninety percent or higher. That's what I categorize as the majority. Improvement in parent involvement with school notices and homework. The staff would like to see what an improvement with. Building needs in terms of renovations at Minut Forest. Still waiting to hear on our application with the Math School Building Authority. And behavioral issues with some students. The East staff is also concerned with some behavioral issues and a lack of an onsite administrator. Although Mrs. Ames does help to cover both buildings. I'm there to help cover three buildings. We have a lead teacher in the building. We have a series of children coming into our schools with some significant behavioral issues that we're working with. They're also concerned with the lack of a playground at East Wareham, but we do have a playground committee. We have plans in place. We just need to do some fundraising in order to have the structure built. And the majority of students feel safe at school. They enjoy school. They're encouraged to do their best by teachers. And they feel valued and respected by staff and peers. Many students commented that they love Minut Forest. They enjoyed the snack program this year that the cafeteria did, and that was great to see. A lot of students commented on that. They enjoy fine arts and they would like more of it. Some do not like mean kids and wish the school had more computers. And this is the data that was interesting. The survey was available for all staff, students, and families to complete. If a family did not have access to a computer, they could ask us for a hard copy and we sent one home. The percentage of surveys returned or that accessed them online was very low despite many attempts to remind families and staff to complete them. So we had a week or two weeks where the window is open that they can complete the surveys. We did Global Connect to remind them. Thirty-eight percent of the staff completed the survey, which was fifty-six out of a hundred and forty-seven members. Four percent of parents.
How many?
Fifty-six out of a hundred and forty-seven staff members completed it, which was thirty-eight percent. Four percent of parents completed the survey. Twenty-seven responses out of six hundred and eighty. That's all we got back. We actually had more of a return rate when we did twenty percent random than we did with sending it to everyone. So what we have, we reported on. Don't know why they didn't go online to take it, but those are the numbers. Next, what I'll do is just report on the goals that we had this year. And these goals were not SMART goals last year. So I always mentioned the area and the actions that we took and then how we measured if we met the goal or not. And for the most part, they were met unless it's otherwise indicated. So for student achievement literacy, we use our intervention block. And paraprofessionals and interventionists provide direct instruction to students at risk. We measure that by the DIBBLES and the progress monitoring data. We provided supplemental educational services to eligible students. We have pre and post data that we look at for that to see if they've made growth. Same thing with our care program. That's for students in grades three to five. And that was provided four days a week, which in the past had only been provided two days a week. Pre and post data shows growth for students. Blast Into Books reading incentive program was run by the PTA. We measured it by the successful completion of reading logs where students had to reach two hundred and forty minutes in order to turn in their log to proceed around the world or different schools had different programs, but it was all about the same. And then we had the creation of periodic benchmark assessments that we did this year. We completed them, but we realize the assessment tool needs to be revised a little bit. So that's going to be one of those that's ongoing. And we implemented formative and summative assessments. And the analysis of the data is showing that there has been student growth in the various assessments that we've done. Whether it's the everyday math unit assessments, it's the Horton-Mifflin unit assessment, that's the data that we're looking at. For math, we implemented the everyday math program, K to five. We cannot fully access the program because it's only in its first year of implementation. We can only go by the unit assessments that we see with the children. It'll be interesting to see our MCAS data this year to see how we did with math. Our intervention block again was used in the same way with pre and post data. Care program was also available for students for math with pre and post data. The PTA did the Math Wonders program. Again, students had to practice extra math activities and submit their logs once they did two hundred and forty minutes. We use Study Island software in school where they could practice with math. And also, parents had the opportunity to use Study Island at home, so they had an access. And then Study Island also gives us a weekly report to show how students are doing. We provided professional development to staff on the everyday math program. Today was another one of those days. And all staff have been trained. We didn't leave anybody out, so we know that was a success. We created periodic benchmark assessments in math. We implemented formative and summative assessments as well. And so those are some of the things that we've done for math. For technology, we provided training to staff on the use of newly purchased equipment. We have document cameras, MIMO's that we purchased through the Makepeace Grant last year, Elmo's. Mrs. Schuler was great in providing training to them. We had ARCs come in that provided some training to staff. And then about a third of the staff have been trained and they've taken the training and the equipment and they're now using it in the classroom. We've tried to integrate technology into instruction as much as we can. Lexiar and Study Island gives us reports, so that's how we know we're making progress with that. We also post information on the school website and try to keep that updated as much as possible. And I asked the technology department, how can we measure this? So Mr. Ujikunis has created a counter for me. And you can't see it if you go on the website, but I have access to it. And we'll keep track of the hits from month to month, and that's how we'll see if there's been an increase in usage. For community, we use the Global Connect phone system as needed, whether we're reminding families of events or something happens at school building and we need to let families know about. We cancel snow days, but we use it for a variety of reasons. And after each time I do a Global Connect, I get an administrative report. So I know right away how many phones were answered, how many were busy, how many phone numbers were invalid, how many went to machines. So we can measure it that way as well. For the community, we use local media for our events. We are always grateful when we see things published in the newspaper. At all times, or not all times, can the reporters be there? So we'll take pictures and submit a story to them. And sometimes it gets printed that way as well, so that's great. We have in-school participation by local citizens. We have a lot of volunteer people that come in. We have retired teachers that come in to help our students. Our foster grandparent program continues. We have Grandma Enos that comes in every year and she works with some of our students. She's a gem, we love her. And we continue to expand connections with our local preschool, daycare centers for improved transition into the public school. So I know Mary Jane Sullivan has worked a lot with preschools in the past. Mary Morgan, our early childhood coordinator, does a lot of outreach to our preschools to make sure that we can provide a smooth transition for when they're coming into kindergarten. For resources, we updated and sent the application to the Math School Building Authority for Minut Forest. We'll know we've measured that. We're still waiting for the approval on that, so that's ongoing. Haven't totally met that goal yet.
Joan, if I, Mr. Chairman, can I just give a little extra information on that? Last week, I got a phone call from Mr. Brusso, who everybody is familiar with, to tell me that Catherine Craven, who's the head of the Math School Building Authority, called him to say that she would be coming to Wareham to personally tour the Minut Forest. And it seems that she got a phone call from Senator Pacheco after, Senator Pacheco got my letter, as well as Mr. Brusso, and both of them have lobbied. So she will be coming to Wareham to look specifically at Minut Forest. So I expect some motion on that, okay?
Wonderful, we look forward to that visit. We relocated classrooms and programs to provide more efficient use of space and personnel. This year, we'll be doing the same thing. Relocating some first grade classrooms back to Minut for next year. We've created some district-wide special ed programs to maximize staff. We submitted our criteria for NIAAC, as I mentioned before. We successfully received it for Hammond. It's in progress for East. We have a playground committee to create a playground for East, update them at Hammond. That hasn't been met yet, it's in progress. We now have a committee. We have some funds in the kitty, but we have a long way to go. So that's the review of what we've done, what we were working on this year. The next slides are our new goals. So this particular subject area is English Language Act. It matches the superintendent in the district goal number one. So these are SMART goals. So student achievement in grades K to five will improve in the areas of ELA and math as demonstrated by an increase of four point ten percent for ELA and five point eight three points for math. That comes straight from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So these are our improvement points that we need to make for AYP to show that we've made improvement. And we're also going to use the following data source to measure this. We'll be using our MCAS for grades three to five, our DIBBLES data in ELA, grades K to three, our grade data for grades K to five, as well as other formative and summative data from the Horton-Mifflin program and so forth. Okay, where'd you go?
That concludes.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Would you like to see the shirt again?
I have no idea what happened.
I'm not seeing it.
Dr. Sylvia is thinking.
All right, so let me close it and then head up again.
He's saying, this is why I stick to paper. Right?
Mine's fine.
All right, here we go.
Humor the old man.
I'm with you.
So, that was the SMART goal. The indicators, the areas that we feel that we need to address. We want to develop and expand on our formative assessments. What activities will that be? Using our DIBBLES K to three data, our grade data in GMAID, one's ELA, one's for math. Our MCAS data, we use our benchmarks and the collaboration of scoring and writing. And this is something that will be new for next year, is we will have writing prompts maybe three times throughout the year. The students would do the prompt, the teachers will score it using a rubric, and then we'll provide some time for them to get together and discuss it so that we can make sure they're all on the same page as far as the scoring. We have our targets and timelines regarding those various assessments when we'll be doing that. How are we going to measure it? For numbers one through four, we'll use our, continue the improvement in evidence of student growth by measurement of data analysis. So we get reports right from DIBBLES when the students take that quick assessment. So we know the students right away who are at risk, who have some risk, or who are low risk. Our grade data, we've been using to look at students, find out what kind of interventions that they need. If they need pull-up for Title I services. We have our October date where we look at the data for MCAS. And then we'll use the rubrics as well for the collaboration of scoring and writing, which all comes from our regular budget. We'll implement additional student support programs for students in grades two to four. We'll be having training in the implementation of response to intervention for grades two to four. The first week of June, when we get out of school, grade three teachers and administrators will be the first ones to be trained for RTI. They'll roll it out and implement it in the fall. And then the next school year, we'll train grades two and four. And then we'll implement that in the winter. So that'll be the first three grade levels next year that will be trained in RTI. And you can see I've shown you the timeline. We're going to measure it by the successful completion of the training and then the implementation of RTI in grades three in September and then implementation of RTI in grades two to four in January two thousand and twelve. There's a variety of sources that we're going to pay for that. The Race to the Top Grant, the Bed Grant, our LEA, we have curriculum grants that's paying for all of that. We also will have an onsite consultant from Teachers 21 that will come periodically to the school to assist the teachers. The Summer Care Program will provide support to students in grades three to five. That is continuing this year. We're very pleased that it's going to be a full-day program, whereas in the past, it was only half-day. So that'll be this summer. And they also do a pre and post test to see that the students are making progress. And then we also have a summer literacy lab to students who are currently in our grade two through five. And that'll happen this summer as well. So we're very pleased that our second grade students going into third is one group that has been targeted for some assistance. We'll expand professional learning communities to enhance the rigor of classroom instruction and build professional learning communities. All the administrators will be attending a two-day conference in July. We'll be able to take that information, bring it back to our district, use it for instruction with our staff. And the ideas that we take and the materials will be able to implement that in our schools. Some of these workshops also come from the District School Assistance Center from the Department of Ed. We have an opportunity for staff to participate in additional courses offered through GSAC, as I mentioned. That's happening throughout the summer. We're very grateful for the staff members that do take these courses throughout the year and the summer. And we have some staff that have either taken or need to take the observing and analyzing teaching course. And that's going to help with the supervision and evaluation that we're currently working on. So once we have a successful completion of that training and we work towards completing the instructional leader program, then we'll be able to have staff assist with that as well. The next goal, number two, is technology. It matches the district superintendent's goal, number two. We want to expand the application and integration of technology to improve learning, instruction, and the organization of the school community. I don't know if it's been on the first page. Indicators will provide professional development to our staff to support ongoing and changing technological advances. We try to embed this throughout the school year. We want to continue training staff on SMARTboard, Elmo's, document cameras. The teachers that have been trained can provide some assistance to the newly trained teachers coming on board. We'll train staff on using technology throughout the curriculum. We'll do it during the next school year. Measures will be the number of teachers who have completed the training and the observations of teachers using the equipment. We'll integrate technology into the classroom. We'll continue to use Lexiar. That's a software program that we use for reading. And as the students go through various levels, they give us reports so we can see an increase in the student achievement. Also, we use Study Islands. And we appreciate Ms. Miranda, who's been able to negotiate a district license because many of these schools use Study Islands. So we'll be able to do that for next year as well. And again, once students use Study Island, whether it's at school or at home, we get a weekly report. Our third goal is community. Matches the district goal of number three. We'll facilitate school-community partnerships to enhance the education of our children. We'll improve communication with everyone who has or should have an interest in the education of children. We'll do that by using Global Connect, the local media, posting our monthly newsletter on the school's website, sending it home to families as well. We measure Global Connect by making sure we reach seventy percent or better of families. And we upload and upgrade our Global Connect information straight from Power School periodically throughout the year. And I can also do it manually. And I have numerous times. And I have numerous times. I'll save a few of the slips that the secretary will give me. I'll go in, I'll manually change it. I send it to Ms. Dee Filippo so she can change it in the district one. And as soon as I get it done, never fails, I have anyone that lands on my desk. So we are constantly upgrading or updating the Global Connect with parent phone numbers so we can make sure if we have to do a Global Connect, we have the most current information and data. The percentage of articles that will be published in the newspaper, we feel that we'll be able to measure. So we'll assign someone that task, maybe even some students, each week to go through the newspaper, save our articles. We'll have a folder for that. And for posting our information on the website, we'll use that counter system that I spoke about. We'll build community partnerships. We'll invite community members into the schools to read or work with our students. In November, we always have Reading is Fundamental, where a lot of community members come in to read to students in all of the schools. And this is wonderful to have. So we want to increase the number of participants every year. We'll continue with the Village PTA as they provide programs and enrichment opportunities for our students. And resources is the fourth goal that we have. We want to improve the physical space and facilities to maximize the educational opportunity. We'll expand and renovate the classrooms at Minnet Forest once we get the approval from that organization. We're going to continue working with them on our application. By fall 2011, we hope to hear from them. And by renovating and expanding Minnet Forest, that's adding another wing onto the building that we can eventually have K to five under one roof. We'll always still have East Wareham as our preschool building, but the goal is to house K to five under the Minnet Forest campus, which would be great, to have everybody together. Not only the students, but to have the teachers together and help come out a little bit. Then, the last final piece is we will apply for a grant for the improvement of the educational experience based on staff requests or needs. East Wareham has applied for grants through Makepeace for various playground equipment. Staff at Minnet Forest have applied through grants for technology purposes. So depending what the needs are in the various buildings, we'll continue to do that. So that's a 23-page document in 13 pages.
Questions?
Okay, thank you. Great job, seriously. I think, I'll say this every single time, that somebody presents this format is great for not only being able to see specifics around what was achieved from prior year, but then also to understand from, you know, the committees as well as the administration, what you guys are going to achieve and then how you think best to measure that. So again, just hats off. A couple of general questions. When you're talking about the average rate of absences, has the teachers and administration got together and talked about anything that might be able to help educate parents about the importance of getting in school? I mean, I know that you're doing it parent by parent when there's a problem, but is there anything that we can do from a district's perspective to, in the papers or on community access television, wherever we can, the importance of keeping your kids in school?
Goons, big goons coming for the house.
Okay, good. Do we have a budget for that?
I try as much as I can to get the word out there. So the beginning of, in the school year, my newsletter, I'm always putting something out there about attendance. We always encourage families to try to take their family vacation time during the school vacations. I know it's not always possible because, for instance, my own family, my husband has to bid on vacations. And if you're the low person on the totem pole, you don't get summer vacations. We never went anywhere with the family unless it was weekends or things like that. But sometimes that's the time when the families go away. So yeah, newsletters is going on, it's on the website, it's in the letters when we have open houses beginning of the year. I always, again, address it with the parents. So I take every opportunity that I can to say it's important for your children to be in school. We have some chronic students who are absent. The families know it. We have gone to houses. We have made phone calls. And sometimes we do have to involve other agencies when it does get chronic or excessive. So I think we do a good job educating the parents. Now, we just have to find out why they're not coming. And other than Mr. Pillings and I knocking on doors and, you know, going to them asking, "Why aren't they here?" And sometimes it's also difficult because phone numbers we have are disconnected or they keep changing. And then it's difficult to reach parents as well. So it is something that we would like to try to continue to work on.
Yeah, so any ideas, any new ideas? I'd love to hear them just around from a district level if we can promote that.
I agree.
For the, I'm, the survey that went out to parents and the comment, and I'm just hearing, you know, this throughout the district about parents feeling like their children aren't being challenged academically. Your thoughts on that? Because I'm hearing it, it seems that every school, that there's concern out there from parents that their kids aren't getting challenged.
I welcome parents to come in anytime they have any concerns or questions. We have parents that take an active interest in their children's education and they're on my school council. School council meetings are open meetings to everyone. So if they have a question or there's something they want to see, I encourage parents to come to school council meetings, come to our PTA meetings. We have them once a month. That's another great venue for parents to come and express any ideas that we try to incorporate. So we are doing, I think, as much as we can to try to get parents' input with that.
Maybe we should promote that aspect a little more.
Right. We did have a parent that came in this year. It was a grade-two parent and had some concerns. And once the teacher said some of the things that we were doing, I don't think the parent realized exactly what we were doing for enrichment. We have junior grade books that we have for kindergarten and some of our elementary grades. We have students are reaching beyond their level for reading. We provide this enrichment opportunity for them. I really am looking forward to response to intervention next year. Because as we have our intervention block, we have teachers that are going to break the students out. So if a student is at risk, they're going to target them specifically. And when we have those students that are higher achieving and need enrichment, we're going to have a teacher that takes a group of students and works specifically on that. And I think RTI is going to give us that opportunity to do that. We've done it in small portions. I think it's going to provide us a larger access to do that.
And I don't know if this is a question for the superintendent through you, Mr. Chair. Is there any plan for rolling out RTTT across the board? If there is going to be any communication to parents or training for parents about that?
There is definitely a plan of rolling it out. The training, I believe we have 36 people being trained, or it's a 36-hour course. And we're starting with third grade, but then it moves into two other grades and then two other grades. So by the end of next year, all of our staff will be trained. Then there will be parent trainings as well so that they will be aware of the opportunities that they will see.
So that is part of the rollout that they will be parent?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So those were just general. And then just specifically around the goals, again, I just, you know, especially the first goal around getting, I know that it might be the dusty goal, but the specifics around, you know, how much you want to achieve by, just hats off to that. And it's just, it's great to be able to have what that goal is and so everyone's on the same page to understand that. In the expand professional learning communities to enhance the rigor of classroom, the indicator. In the action items, number two, the opportunity for staff to participate in additional educational growth by taking courses offered by the DSAC. I'd just love to be able to know the goal of how many teachers you want to attend that. And then in three, observing and analyzing teacher courses, who will attend that too? Like what are your ideas around? How many teachers are going to attend that or who?
It'll be, for number three, the observing, analyzing, teaching, it'll be the instructional leaders that will be identified and to help with the supervision and evaluation. So there's only two people that would help with that. The assistant principals and I also do that. So we've been trained. So we'll have five people that will be able to do that.
Okay.
For the DSAC courses, sometimes it's a limited enrollment. So we can only enroll maybe two or three. So it's based on when they tell us the workshops are. And what has happened in the past is they'll tell us the date and the location, and we sign people up. And then they change the date and they change the location. And it affects if people can go or not, so.
So it's hard to be able to put specific numbers there?
Yeah. We go by what they allow us. And we have had staff members who have signed right up. So we've met their criteria as far as the numbers. We just need them to stick to times and locations.
Okay. In the next goal, the expand application and integration of technology, through you, Mr. Chair, Dr. Rich, we talked about the conversation around expanding Power Schools. Have those conversations gone on yet?
They have not gone to the next level. We, at the last administrative meeting, the two elementary principals and Ms. Dee Filippo had a brief conversation, but we've made another appointment for further conversations.
Okay.
I can add, at the administrative meeting also, that came out after this was printed, I will have one class that appears that will have iPads. So we'll identify one classroom for the youth. So that's not in here, that.
Okay. That was the other one that I had on here is that, because it would be great that those are in there because you're on the road to achieving both of those. So, and, you know, around the facilitate school-community partnerships, having something around approving capture of email, because we've been talking a lot about that, or the expansion of Power Schools. Once that conversation has happened, updating the goals to include both of those. And I'll, oh, and the only other thing is when it comes to the improved physical space, you had talked about getting the East Playground. So go ahead. I mean, I would just put that on there since that's a goal of the district. Thank you very much. Thank you, again.
Dr. Sylvia?
Hi, John.
Hello.
I'll try to be brief. What was the, what was the, I missed it. The rate of return on the parent survey of ballpark? You don't have to go exact.
Four percent.
About four percent? And you sent it out to everybody?
Out of 680, I think it was 27 out of 680.
You probably should be better off doing a random sample.
That was eight percent.
Yeah, that was eight percent, okay.
You know, we hesitated on sending out the paper form because I thought if I go out 500 surveys back and I had to count all the tallies, it would take forever. So we went technology-wise.
Rhonda, I had right here, what was the rate of return of the parent survey? And then underneath it, I put concern rigor. And the reason I bring that up again, and not to build on what Rhonda said, but I think it's important because those parents that took the time to fill out a survey, obviously are concerned about rigor. And wherever we go in the community, I want to tell you right now that that is probably the number-one thing that I hear, that there is a lack of rigor. Now, people can define rigor a thousand different ways. And we, educational professionals, know that one person's definition of rigor certainly won't be the same as another person's definition of rigor. But the bottom line is, there is a perception out there. And I don't necessarily agree with it, but there is a perception out there that somehow, some way, we're in public schools of falling short in terms of providing the best possible opportunities for those students that are more motivated. I think that just asking parents to be involved is not really the answer. The answer is to really take a good, hard look at the teaching and learning going on in our building. I'm sure you are. And to really look at it from a clinical perspective. You know, what are we really doing and how well are we really doing it? And I think that we're taking some steps to do that. And you have, in, to a certain degree, you particularly, because you're all over the place, really haven't had the capacity to get into classrooms the way you probably should and really do a diagnostic, so to speak, of, you know, what the level of rigor is in your building. So I think that with the new plan and the response to intervention and the new plan for specialists and the help that you're going to be getting, I think on evaluation down the road, I think is going to go a long way in terms of providing you with insight as to what the rigor level is in your particular school building. And then the second thing is about rigor is, and I've talked to the superintendent about this and I've said it openly at this meeting, I think we do a lousy job at telling people all the good things that are happening in our school. And I'm not blaming you as a principal. I'm talking about us as a systemic organization. We basically do a lousy job about really emphasizing the positive things that are going on, those special things that are going on, you know, and articulating very well those positive things that parents want to see about their children, particularly at the elementary level, you know? So I think that that's something we really do have to look at. I'm really concerned about 38% of the teachers doing the survey.
Some of it was glitches in the technology.
I'm very concerned about that. I mean, either that, that either reeks of apathy or morale or something. Because I would think that if they've got the opportunity to put down on paper or on a computer, you know, how they really feel about things, they would jump at the opportunity. And I'm really concerned about that. You didn't mention in your estimation how the specialization in grades four and five is working out.
Oh, for the teaming? We're having a slight change next year for grade four. We had a two-person team and we had a three-person team, a triad. It was a lot of work with the three-person team. I give those three teachers credit for trying it. They really worked well with it, but they said it was too much to have three groups of children come through. So we still are going to have two groups of two teams next year for grade four and then one standalone. And the grade-five teams are working very well. We have, again, two groups and then a standalone.
Could I ask why the standalone is still happening?
Because we only have five teachers. It's an odd number of classrooms.
I guess that makes sense.
I had hoped before our budget, before our budget issues to increase grade four by one teacher so we could have even teams. But it actually works out because the teachers that are doing the standalones wanted the standalone. And for some students, it still is beneficial to only have that one teacher. Sometimes this age is still not ready to go back and forth between different teachers. So I'm happy with it. And we are bringing teaming down to grade three to a degree next year. We have teachers that are going to switch for science and social studies and that'll be working together as well.
I just think, you know, we're all being driven by assessment, well, it's assessment-driven accountability. We're all being driven by it. But I, and I'm not at your school and I'm not going to give you my philosophical opinion on it because I'm not an elementary teacher, but I do have an opinion. And I've done a lot of reading on specialization at the elementary level. And those places that have had the greatest success on standardized testing, especially in a city, have specialized. So, you know, you've got to go to what the data tells you. And it's been very, very successful. So I understand the fiscal reality of it. But if there's any way possible to specialize, I think that we should take a good, hard look at that.
I had some grade-four teachers come to me today with ideas on how they could do more flexible grouping next year, targeting, you know, student needs, whether it was enriching students or helping the at-risk ones. So the teachers are really trying to come up with new ways. And I support them with that.
And that's being said, the other, one of the other things, you said that you're going to be doing a lot of prompts, writing a lot of writing, open response writing and so forth and so on. One of the things that I implemented in several of the places where I was doing consulting work is we did collaborative evaluation of the work. And we had teachers from other teams grade the other team's work and then get together and collaborate as to what they saw. Because if you're grading your own stuff, and I'm not saying you're being dishonest, but you're looking at it from your lens. And it really helps when someone else looks at it or looks at student work through their lens and you get together and talk about it. So that's something I wanted to throw out when you were talking about doing a lot more with the prompts. I think that's it. I mean, I just marvel at the job that you elementary principals do and under conditions that are not the best. We're talking about the physical plants and we're talking about the budget cuts. We're talking about staffing. We're talking about a lack of enrichment. And so I think you folks do a great job. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
This is not to put any pressure on Mr. Panarisi who's going to follow, but this is one of the best reports that I've seen.
Thank you.
Excellent job. And I know yours will be just as great.
It's a team effort, Mr. Fines. It's not just me. It's the school council members. You know, it's everyone.
Okay.
So I thank you for that.
Eddie Haslam.
On the student-to-teacher ratio, do you know what the real number is other than the formula? other than the formula that has thirteen to one?
I really think you have to go by the classroom teacher to student. Yes, we have the specialized students, and I tried to anticipate some questions this evening. So for next year, I can give you those numbers. For first grade, we will have twenty-one to twenty-two students per teacher. Grade two will have twenty-one to twenty-two students per teacher. Grade three will have twenty-one students. And grade four will have twenty-two to twenty-three students per teacher. And in grade five, we'll have twenty to twenty-one. So, overall, our numbers are pretty good. So we're pleased with that.
Thanks. On the, the new everyday math, you said there was a major improvement?
That we've seen in the everyday workings.
Okay.
So the MCAS data will be another way to help measure that.
Is that, this the first year that you're using it?
Yes, first year. I will say, I was thinking about Dr. Sylvia's comments about rigor. I had a parent that came in the other day and he said, "I think you, you teachers are purposely trying to trip me up because that math, I can't understand it." He said, "What happened to the good old ways of computing?" So, the math has changed and we're having students change their thinking and explaining of math. So, I think we have increased the rigor right there in math.
The excellent job on the community involvement. I mean, I think that this report is outstanding. The, the things that, that, so, Mr. Pelling and, and your council is all involved in, plays a big role. I just want to know what, what's some of the feedback that you might have received from the parents, especially on the bullying prevention?
On the what?
On the bullying prevention. That's, that's a big item. Were there any major concerns?
I haven't heard concerns. The only times we hear from parents is they think there's an issue of bullying with their child and they'll call us and they'll, they'll tell us about that. Parents are pleased that we have a plan in place. They're very pleased that they know when they do call that they get immediate, there's an investigation that happens immediately. Anytime, whether it's bullying or just a student conflict or harassment. Mr. Pelling, Mrs. Lahane, my guidance council, who's also the lead teacher, get right on that. They call parents back. Of course, we, as parents know, you can't always tell them what we do for consequences. But, I think parents feel relieved that that support is there, and I know the teachers do. They mentioned it in a meeting this week, that they appreciated the support from them when Mr. Pelling's not available, helping out. And the same is true at Hammond and Neese with Mrs. Ames, helping to oversee the lead teachers. So, it is there in place, we do investigate it. It's not always an issue of bullying, it might just be an issue of student conflict. And we help educate parents on the difference.
In the last, that's not the last compliment, I complimented this entire presentation. Is very impressed with the multicultural activity. What are some of the, other than the way it's listed, are there speakers that come in or what is the participation with the students?
We have a dad that comes in, he does a lot of storytelling and songs. And he does that for various classes. Anytime a teacher comes and says, "I have a parent that wants to come in and speak about, you know, a topic," we always encourage that. So, we would love to have even more come in if possible. Guest readers that came in in November, sometimes they come back and they share about their heritage or they, they share stories, you know, when they were a child. So, our children get to understand what it was like, you know, before. We're always looking for extra ways to invite the community and, and to expand upon that because we really feel that the multicultural is important in our community. And for some students who don't leave with him, they don't know what life is like outside of, you know, outside of the, even the city, they don't understand that. So, we try to bring programs in also to help the students understand that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joan. On page two of the document that was originally sent to us, you have some demographic information. I wonder if you could comment on the fact that you're projecting only ninety-six plus for kindergarten for next year? That's a.
Ninety-six students?
Yeah. That's a really low number historically, isn't it?
We are right about where we were last year at this point. So we have eighty-nine registrations and six of those are retention, so we have ninety-six students that are currently registered. It is a little bit lower than we have in past years. Again, we are trying every way we can to get the information out to parents to please register your child for kindergarten. So we will expect to get a few more over the summer. But it is, last year and this year are about the same, but it is lower than we've had in the past.
So, whatever, I mean, it seems like there was a bit of a bubble in grade one this year.
Yes.
But it seems like that bubble is dissipating and the pressure on the buildings, at least from a number of classrooms perspective, is, is being reduced. Is that a fair statement?
Can you repeat that last part?
I'm not saying a renovation isn't badly needed, but in terms of actual number of classrooms, the number of children seems to be taking some pressure off of that issue.
It depends on the class. I just said, like, grade three this year, there was a bubble going forward. At Minnetonka Forest, there's no room at the end. We, we packed. And I, you know, we have two additional interventionists coming in for next year. I'm trying to decide where we're going to put them. I mean, I don't think the roof is an option. Yes, at Hammond, we will have some, some classroom space.
Putting people on the roof generally causes leaks, I don't recommend it. Especially flat roofs.
I have to move some people around and sometimes that causes anxiety, but we have to do the best we can to, to help students. Hammond is the only building where we would have some space. But, for instance, one of the classrooms, the art room in the basement, we can now bring that up to the main level. We can have a sensory room again. We can have a room where the teachers can work with students for interventions.
I was very interested in your comment in response to Cliff's asking you about teaming. It sounds like, but I don't want to put words in your mouth, so feel free to correct me as you usually do. It sounds like you, you may actually be picking students for certain classrooms depending on whether they, you think that they will actually do well in a teaming situation or not.
That is true.
That's, so, we don't have a purely random selection of students for fourth and fifth grade anymore?
We do. We do both. I will sometimes, with Mr. Pelling's help, play students strategically. And the teachers are in the process right now of assigning students to classrooms, and that's random because they don't know the teacher names in the classroom, so they help that also.
So it's initially random?
It's initially random.
But then you apply your fine-tuning. Then you fine-tune it? Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
That's interesting. And how long have you been fine-tuning?
It's been two weeks now.
So this.
How many years?
Oh, how many years? It's my ninth year. We fine-tune it every year.
You, you fine-tune every year in terms of what student goes with what teacher?
Yes.
Really?
You have to, because you want to make, there are some students that you want to make sure you separate from others because of behavior reasons. We have some students that may not work well in a team, that may do better with that one teacher. We have students that we feel would flourish because one teacher may be really knowledgeable with technology and we know that student loves technology, or we know that student loves math and this team is, you know, working on math. So, we take a lot of consideration for, for student needs. And I give parents an opportunity to just let me know about their children. I never ask them to request a teacher, but if there's something I need to know for the placement of your child, let me know that. So, it, it's not an easy process to place children for the following year. And it, like I said, we started two weeks ago and the teachers are just finishing that up now. So, there's a lot that goes into placing students. But we think about student needs and where would be the best place for them.
And it's far more complicated than who's a high achiever and who's struggling.
Right. Boy versus girl and, yeah, it's, there's a lot of factors that go in, into it.
Okay. On the original document, not the one you presented, but on the original document, I see the English AYP data on page six, but I don't see the math AYP data anywhere. Am I missing it?
Um, that, when I cut and paste it, I hope I didn't cut it out.
Okay, let's assume.
No, it's there, on page eight. If it's the same page eight that you have. For math, we did not make it in the category, isn't it, list it right there.
Well, it's not on my page eight. So, but that's all right. I just have a.
I can give you, page eight-nine of mine has the categories and then the overall history.
So the aggregate for English was eighty-three point six? Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
I'm frankly not a fan of big use of test scores for individual teachers, but I am a fan of it when you get a large enough cohort, like an entire school. So eighty-three point six and the goal was ninety point two? Am I reading this correctly?
Correct.
Okay. What were the comparable numbers for math?
Math was seventy-six point seven. That was our actual one. We needed to make eighty-four point three. We did go down in math last year, which is why we did not make AYP in math.
So, I realize this is an impossible question, but what is your expectation for the results that you have not yet received but that where the kids?
I expect to make AYP based on the everyday math program that we have, the math intervention that we've been doing with students, the title one pullouts that we've been doing. I expect to make it.
You expect to make it. So, and if you don't, to what will you attribute it?
I have to go back and. I, I don't think we won't make it because of the, the math that we're seeing. Kindergarten, first grader, some of the math things, the concepts they're coming up with and the algebraic expressions they are doing. Mrs. Schluter, our math coach, is amazed at what she's seeing this year. So that can only lead to success here. If we don't make it, we're going to go back as a school and we're going to try to figure out why. And we have to look at the data. What is the data showing us that show that we didn't make it?
But, but I'm obviously really pleased to hear that. So you actually consider RTI and the instructional leaders an enhancement on something that you expect to already have achieved?
Well, RTI will only be for literacy. That's going to.
I know, that's one of the things you and Chris corrected me on, I remember vividly. But nevertheless, you pointed out that that literacy focus on RTI is going to help your math.
Of course it is.
Yes, yes.
Especially word problems, things like that.
And after everybody gets trained in literacy and RTI, we have the opportunity to roll it out for math, but we're starting with literacy. But we can use the same strategies to even do it without, without doing it formally.
I understand what you're saying. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I really don't have anything to add to this. I would like to make a couple of comments about perception that our community seems to have. And Cliff, I know what you're saying, like, there's this negativity. And unfortunately, I think that comes from, and I equate this to, in my household, I call the baloney syndrome.
A lot of baloney.
When I was, well, and there's a story behind this though. When my son was in preschool, he went to a preschool where they provided lunch. Wonderful home-cooked meals, Graham was in the kitchen, you know, the menu was posted. You'd go in there and like, can I just stay? Because she'd have like a boiled dinner going, whatever, it was just a great place. But it still, there was this one parent, I'll never forget this, came in and like yelled at the director after like a two-week span. She's like, "I can't believe you say you provide lunch, but, you know, my child has had a baloney sandwich every day for two weeks. That's not providing lunch." And the director looked at her and she went, "What? Like, there's not even baloney on the menu." It was just easy for the kid to say. "What'd you have for lunch?" "Baloney sandwich." It was that simple. Child never had a baloney sandwich. And I think though, like, kids come home, "How was school today?" "Fine." "What'd you do?" "Nothing."
Nothing.
I get it at home. My kids do the exact same thing, and I, I don't expect anything different. I think we, we have a different expectation. I, I think from when I was a child to having children now, I see that children's opinions mean more to parents. Like, if you came home from school, when I was a kid, you had a bad day, deal with it. And I came from an educator's home. Education wasn't unimportant, it was like, deal with it. Now, we kind of cater to every little bitty thing. And I think that's healthy. And I think that gives us, it feeds into the negative perception and instead of saying, you know, if my, my kids come home and they're like, there might be a teacher that they, you know, "Too bad, I don't care, you have this teacher for a year, figure it out." It's that simple. You're not going to click with every single teacher you have or every personality type you have. And, you know, and unfortunately, kids' opinions mean more than they used to. And I don't think they, I don't mean they shouldn't mean something, they do. But at what level? At how are we, how are we perceiving that? My kids surpassed me in math, I think, in second grade. So, you know, difficulty is not, you know, my kids love the challenges at school, they push themselves. I'm not going to say they, they've done well in every subject, they certainly haven't. I've had the phone calls from school, just like probably most parents have. But they like being here, they like the challenge, they like kind of pushing the limits, you know, on requirements and stuff. And I think that you have to kind of weed out stuff and breaking that, that quick, easy baloney habit of, "Oh, you know, oh, it's not challenging." Why? Because that person, most of the time, we're not taught to think or look into anything. So it's just quick and easy to say what somebody else's opinion was. And that's, that's what, unfortunately, what plagues our society now anyway. And I don't know how we overcome that, I really don't. But, and, and I have to say with surveys, I'd be honest, I was, probably would have been a parent that never would have accomplished that. And I don't mean that, I, I just plead, when you've got, when you're in so many things and you're on email and your email doesn't stop all day long, you kind of look at things and go, "Oh, I gotta do that." But you may not get back to it or you're not going to get to everything. And I, I think that we have to be very careful, especially with the pace that we now have pushed ourselves into. I just don't think people have a moment to breathe anymore. And, and it's a shame, it really is, truly a shame, but I'm not surprised by the numbers. But thank you very much for your work and I hope you get to see the least spot.
Can I just pull the one thing she said? Mr. Chair?
The chair.
Yes, this is the chair. I couldn't agree more, you know, and, and again.
Thank you.
And it, it's about, it's about, it's just, it becomes systemic. The, the perception out there is, well, there's no rigor. And I, and I, I don't believe it, number one. But I think we have to be creative on, if the parent survey is important, and I think it is.
It may be a different way of doing it.
Being a former principal, I think it is really important to know what's in the heart and minds of your parents. Okay? Because that really provides you a storehouse of information. Just, just a creative, just a creative thought that just came to me. You just had your field day, right? How many parents were there?
Tons.
Hand them a piece of paper, have them do a survey.
I think then we see a very big difference in opinion. I think, because you're going to see a lot more happiness than, a lot more pleasure in what's going on. And we're going to hear more of the good stuff. I think when things are good, we tend to just let them be good and we, then we step out of it. And, you know, but when things are bad, you know, fire starts spitting from people's eyes. And, you know, and that's all, and it takes, it takes the forefront. And that's unfortunate because I, I don't think it's bad, I think it's good.
Thank you, Joan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Ann, and thank you to the.
Thanks, Ann.
To the Minnetonka and Hammond and Neese staff that came to this evening. Chris, you're on.
Come on down.
I need a little reason.
It hasn't reached forty degrees yet, so.
It hasn't reached forty degrees yet, so...
This is beautiful.
We're all gonna have to start cuddling for warm.
Nice. Works for me. Jefferson, can't move your seat.
The baloney will be coming through any minute now.
Told you, that looks excellent already. Look at that.
I can read that.
You have no idea.
I'm going to stand because I've been sitting for- for a long time. First, I'd like to thank my, thank my school council members, Miss Patty Bazinet and Diane Higgins for being here this evening.
Hi, Diane.
Um, the rest of my school council is at the concert. The concert was scheduled months ago because it was canceled twice during the winter because of our storm, and I couldn't shift either date. So, um, the other half is at, um, our concert. But thank you very much for your support all year, for coming to our meetings and for helping me with this project. I'm gonna ask everybody to do a stretch because we've been sitting and listening for a long time. And, um, Deaconess is a very different school than mine when we look at the, um, progress that we've made and where we need to go. There is a double rainbow over Deaconess, and I chose this picture especially because I do believe there's a pot of gold at the end of that rainbow. There should be two, if I'm correct.
Excuse me. If you find it, the school committee is responsible for the budget.
Absolutely.
Makes a claim.
It automatically goes right over, but not to the general budget. It goes right to the school budget.
Great. So, um, that is something I wanted to point out. And I'm not familiar with this laptop, so again, um, you should have a copy of the new, um, school improvement plan because, um, where Dr. Abinovich says that I- I broke mold, um, it's really not breaking mold, it's called using the wrong template. I had so many of them, to be quite honest with you, with revisions that we all had made, all great revisions, that when I began to fill one out, it just, it lost them. So, um-
Just use the down arrows. That might help.
Just what?
The down and up, you know, how the other-
You can do that with this. You see, I have an app, I'm an Apple person, so, um, this is not mine. Oh, sorry.
Should I both?
I know.
Our school-wide data. Is that your page two on that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the school data, and I'm just gonna go through mine. We have our current enrollment. We have the enrollment by race. And the most important thing that we should be looking at with Deaconess with regards to enrollment is that it is a growing enrollment. At one point, um, this year, we were up by seven hundred and we were up to seven hundred and twenty students. That's quite a bit for that school. I don't think we've seen those numbers until, until two thousand and two. We are the district's ELL elementary school, which means all students that are English language learners come to the Deaconess School. We also host the Learning Center for children that have developmental delays and- and other disabilities, um, in grades K through five. And we are also the Adjustment Room for students in, um, K to grade three. And many people kinda look and say, "How could you possibly have, um, adjustment students in grades K to three?" And- and we do, and they- they're quite severe, to be quite honest with you. They occupy a lot of- a lot of our time, but they're in great hands and they're at our school. So, we service a very diverse population at Deaconess. That diverse population does kind of explode itself because you can't put lots of bodies, especially with those really specialized populations, in one area. So, we've had to expand a bit. We have used our little gym for a Title I area. We have used our library for a learning area. And that's all to accommodate that- that growing popu- population that we have. Forty-nine percent of our students participate in the free lunch breakfast program. That is something else that's very different at Deaconess, where most people associate Dis- Deaconess with being the higher socioeconomic section of town. Our numbers are growing. We are now approximately equal to the middle school with regards to their numbers of free and reduced lunch. So, we are, um, seeing a lot of different types of families. Welcome them, everyone as usual, um, but our- our population is- is different. Uh, you'll notice that on my, um, report, that I have put some research data because that's the way I was trained up. You'll also notice that there's a little bit more detail in every single one of my, um, goals and my things that I'm going to do, my strategies. And that's because I use that as a checkoff list. That's also a checkoff list for my staff so that they know what the expectation is going to look like and what it's going to be down to that granular lever, level of what the expectation is when we're going through this process. So, there's just a little bit more detail in there, and that's mainly from my own learning because this is a tool that I do use during the school year. And this is gonna drive me insane. May I ask some things? How do you roll this down? Because when I go to roll it-
Yeah, just use the arrows.
When I use the arrow down, just, "Oh, you mean in the middle? Does it make a difference?"
No, just the down one.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Oh, you know what I did?
Oh.
If you get the mouse over here to this right here, then just keep pressing here.
Oh, okay.
This mouse, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna take the pressure to get it stopped.
So, just right here?
Yep.
It just went back again? Yeah, it did. Now, you can see where I had trouble with the template.
Yeah.
There you go.
And that will just keep scrolling it.
Dr. Silver, no problem flipping pages?
Watch out for those paper cuts.
The attendance and- and different rate. We have attendance of ninety-four point nine. And this, um, is based on our most recent data. The actual school improvement plan has the, um, gestating figures on that, um, average number of days absent. Um, out-of-school suspension, retention rate, and in-school suspensions, all reasonable, lower than the district, lower than the state. What we do at Deaconess is we send out our monthly letters for all tidiness because we think that tidiness is also a problem in our, um, school. We have a lot of children that miss fifteen to twenty minutes, the most crucial fifteen to twenty minutes of the day. So, um, after a certain period of time, if we have no response from the parent, we bring the parent in and I'll have a meeting either for tidiness or absenteeism. If, um, that doesn't do any good, then we extend that to the next level. Our adequate yearly progress. We have not made AYP, um, since I believe, like, two thousand and five. And that's in the ELA. And that would be in the subgroups and the aggregate. In mathematics, we have made AYP for two years, two thousand and eight and nine, but then it happened in two thousand and ten that we did not. It's the expectation that we will try to do our best. When you look at the, um, goals and the percentages, I base the percentage of increase on the Race to the Top figure that we were given. I believe there is a three-year figure, five percent each year. So, I base Deaconesses at a very modest five percent. I'm hoping that it's more, but I wanted to at least comply to the Race to the Top figure, which is five percent. Because we're in a different category. We're a Level Three school, and we're in restructuring. Our parent and community involvement data. I have a, um, great group of parents who have, right from day one, when I've been in that building, jumped in and helped us transform that garden and the courtyard and came in and helped us distribute things to the classrooms during the summer. And these people have continued as my, as my school council heads all during the year. They have supported the Deaconess students in the school, and it's just remarkable, all the things that they do. It's called the Deaconess West PTA. They have not disbanded that, and I think sometimes in the back of their mind, they're still hoping to take over the West School again to kinda ease our crowding a bit. Um, what we have advisory functions is we have a principal's coffee. And every once in a while, we'll get just maybe one or two members, but then there'll be a time when we'll get twelve or fifteen members and ideas really start to flowing. And from that particular time, things begin to expand. Um, we have our student council, the Playground Committee, which is a section of the PTA, and our Read to Succeed Coordinator. Parent volunteerism at the Deaconess School is very widespread. We have our Read to Succeed program, our Field Trip Volunteers, the Courtyard Project, Playground Committee, the Floor Ride Program, the Veterans Day Parade. I think people, you should've seen that in the newspapers this year. That is really, parents bring their children, but they are in that parade with their children. It's a really remarkable thing. We have lots of classroom volunteers. Our PTA awards were- were quite high. There were a hundred and twenty, I believe, at Deaconess this year. Uh, we have family movie night and a holiday fair. Our community partnerships, and our most recent one is the New Bedford Symphony Orchestra, where they gave us a grant, um, for music in the morning, which we have done each day. Believe it or not, when parents are coming in to school and they're dropping their children off and they're a bit toddy, people move quicker when they hear that music. And, um, they told me that I should have an, uh, an increase in, you know, actually a decrease in the tidiness and- and an increase in student attendance. I said, "Well, what can- can the music do?" But somehow or another, when that music gets played, children just buzz around, "I gotta go, Ma, see you later," and that's it, and they're down because they know that that's that period of time when they have to get into their classroom or get breakfast. So, that has really been wonderful in our, in our school. Um, we have the CBS Community Outreach where they have given us a twenty-five-hundred-dollar grant for our playground, to start that up. Um, and that twenty-five-hundred dollars is put for, um, students with physical handicaps to be, have accessibility to playground equipment as well as students that do not have physical handicaps. So, we want to make sure that when we have this playground, that that playground could be a community playground and that all children would be able to enjoy that playground. We have the Wayham Boys and Girls Club, which we communicate often if we have a homework situation or things like that, and our daycare. And we have our wonderful grandparents programs. We have two nannies who come into our schools, and, um, kids love them. And these women are there at seven o'clock in the morning, and, um, they are just fantastic. And it changes the whole environment when they're around. We have an ELL coordinator, Ms. Maureen Manning, and she is our outreach coordinator. She does a great deal of, um, parent calling, finding trans, um, people that can translate, and she'll take our important papers and newsletters and have them translated. So, she does that, and she'll be with us, I believe, Ms. Schluter, a little bit more frequently um, this next year, so, which is great. Uh, the Make Peace Grant Award. Our third-grade teacher and the, um, Make Peace Grant Awards won, I believe, approximately ninety-five-hundred dollars, and that was a great thing. We did have three people inside the building, put the, put the grant through. Um, she did come out with it, and she was just absolutely thrilled. We have the Wayham High School School-to-Work Program, where we have the volunteers come over here and they help, and they'll help in any area of the school. They've helped our custodian, they've helped the office, they've helped in many different areas. We're told that next year, they're only going to be here in the afternoon, but it would be every day, which is nice. And this year, it was afternoon one day, morning the next day. I think the consistency of just having it all in the afternoon would be better. We have the Els Dictionary Program, the Wayham Guiding Club File Project.
Would you mind, Jo, could I ask you to do that? Either my fingers are too chunky or something that I'm not meaning, or whatever.
It's the shirt.
It's the what?
It's the shirt.
Okay, Jo, you can show the shirt.
I only showed it earlier. It's keeping me warm now.
I've got fifteen minutes to get to this, 'cause she's gonna have it.
They're losing.
Um, our methods of communication, we have the Deaconess Digest. We renamed that from the Communicator. We have also newsletters that come from our coaches and the ELL coordinator. We have our automated calls, um, email. We do use email for parents that email us. We email back. School website, we've been trying to load more and more things on our website so that it may solve a call, it may help a parent when they're in a crisis of homework and somebody forgot their book or whatever, and how do I get to the link where the books are online? So, we've tried to put as much as we can on those websites. Our curriculum evenings, we try to have those every other month. And what that is, is that's put on by our coaches and myself, and we invite parents to come in, and they get to learn what their children are learning. So, for everyday math, parents got to come in and actually experience a lesson in everyday math. We had something for, um, MCAS as well, and we had something for ELA in the writing with the six traits. Parents really liked that. It wasn't a huge turnout. It was about twenty this time, you know, at- at our high. But as time goes on, we're hoping that more and more parents will show up. We think we're gonna do some food-type things to kinda get people there. We also have our books for Bingo, and we have, uh, proposed new school sign because there was talk about if we have a sign, that really gets an awful lot of travel. And if we had a double-sided sign, perhaps not one of those lighted LED ones, but something that we could change letters that you could lock, so we'll be changing the letters on. We could have something like that. And so, the PTA is looking into that. We've got a couple of hits out on that. Other parent involvement. Many of our students' mothers are going to school to become teachers, and they will donate time in our classroom. And that's really, they love to come in because they're getting a nice little practicum and they're getting that experience, and we love to have them. And I think that's a great thing for their, for their children to be able to see. We also have had two nurse internships, um, this year, which has really helped out quite a bit. And we have our interpreters for special functions and our office volunteers that come in. The, yeah, just the, the impact statement. We want our parents inside our building. Again, there were a hundred and nineteen PCEA awards handed out this year. That means there was a hundred and nineteen people that donated their time and their energy to the well-being of the Deaconess students. And we are grateful for that, and, um, we're hoping to increase that number next year. That is the number that we will use to gauge how we're doing in that area. That will be our baseline. The extracurricular, um, and multicultural activities. A little bit disappointing this year. When we had the basketball program, you needed a minimum, I believe, of something like fifteen students or eleven students to sign up, and we didn't have it. And so, I went out to the calls and I called the parents that did and a couple of them that didn't, and they said, "Well, there's no buses attached to it." So, I talked to our PTA, and they, with my school council, we came up with another idea, which I believe is over in some union area looking to be approved, that we would like to start another after-school program that just does not always have to do with sports. It could involve music, it could involve art, it could involve, um, a book club and sewing or cooking. We wanna be able to have our students- Yeah, and the- the bargain's true. We want our students to be able to experience a lot of different activities. And we want them and their parents to see that the academic piece, there's an extension to that, that this school is more than just someplace where I go and I learn how to do math or I learn how to read or I learn how to write. It's also a place where I socialize and I learn different things, and I get to look at my teachers in a different way, and they get to see me in a different way. So, that's really something that we're hoping to get. We look for different opportunities. For example, our two fourth-grade students who were very comfortable with me came right up and a couple of months ago, they said, "We wanna start a book club. We're- we're having a book club. We need to have a book club." And they gave me all their ideas, and I typed out on a nice little brochure for them, and they sent it out, and they ended up with having eleven students in the fourth grade. They were very, very organized. "This is the book we're going to read. We're gonna meet every Wednesday. Your parents are gonna need to have to come pick you up. You can't be late. You can't miss more than two times, or you're out. You're gonna get kicked out." And the third-grade students were asking, the fourth-grade students, "Well, can we join?" And so, they came to me and they said, "Well, what do you think, Mrs. Canaree Zee?" And I said, "Well, what are your concerns?" And their concern was that they wouldn't be able to keep up with them. And they didn't wanna be dragged down. Because this was their time, and this was their club for the fourth grade. And if you wanted to join, you know, this is something that you had to have the standards on. So, I said, "Well, how are you gonna put that in a nice way, you know, to have other students understand?" So, what they did is they let them preview the book. And then they got, they got the reading coach to have the students read. And they felt that, that maybe there should be a third-grade book club and a fourth-grade book club because they were kind of on the roll and they were, they were heading out. But it's, it's still going. I think the last one is next Wednesday, and parents have been very good coming to pick up, and they're having a great old time. Um, the proposed after-school program is, again, we talked about that. It's a little bit of everything, not just, um, in the sports arena. There's some dance in there. bit of everything, not just, um, in the sports arena, there's some dance in there. We have chorus before school and the band before school, and it's amazing that parents will bring the children. It's approximately ten percent of our grade four and five, um, that come in, and the students enjoy the band, and they enjoy the chorus, and, um, that's kind of a nice way to come into the building every morning and listen to them. Our care program had twenty-five participants. Our math club, which is a voluntary math club put on by one of our teachers, twenty-four in total, there are two sessions, twelve each session. Book club has eight, I think that's moved up. Our tutoring had thirty-one, our SES tutoring was thirty-one. We didn't start out that high, but we grew to that high. Our school council, ten, and of course, the band, the car, and the chorus. Our multicultural activities, because we are the ELL school, we're very sensitive with the fact that most of our parents, um, that come from foreign countries, do not feel comfortable coming into the school. So what could we do, um, to have our parents feel comfortable? And one of the things that we are doing is, um, our very first international night, which is, by the way, tomorrow night, and although we only have perhaps maybe ten families, we have extended that out to everybody, and, um, we're hoping for a great turnout. We also have a live Skype with a sister city in Cape Verde, and that comes out of our third grade class, and that's always very exciting, and the students are very excited about that. And when we have a holiday celebration around the Christmas season, we have Christmases around the world, where we look at each person, different way to celebrate the Christmas holidays, and we talk about that, and we read books about that, and we show that there are many different celebrations, many different ways, and that the diversity and acceptance of others is, is paramount during this time. It's not just Christmas. Um, we are looking into, again, finding that busing, because that seems to be the key here, and I know that the middle school has a bus, I think that leads their school around three-thirty or so, and I'm not sure if our school can hook on, but those are all talk sets that we're going to have. Okay, um, this is built from the corrective action plan, and not the school improvement plan from last year, but the corrective action plan that I had passed in earlier in the year. Um, we needed to know, okay, what was going to be happening in ELA and reading. Because we're in a very severe state in our school with regards to making AYP, and that it's a little bit more critical for us, and there's a sense of urgency, um, we didn't really have the ability or, or, or the time to sit back and say, well, what can we do this year? You need something in place that you can do that shows that you're moving towards wherever you need to be. Knowing that RTI, that research-driven, government-recommended intervention program for school restructuring is the choice that we have made, we wanted to try to prep our school into what it was going to look like for this coming year. So what we did is what we call dabbling in it. Um, one of the first things that we looked at is that we looked at the integration and alignment of the grade-level instruction in different areas. We were very fortunate enough to get a new math series, which kinda took the heat off of that area. The ELA section is still something that we are struggling with, as most districts that have that series are. We are not alone in that process. Um, right now, our ELA curriculum committee is doing a fantastic job. They're very excited, and they're forming a structure of that scope and sequence and, um, the alignment to the Common Core. Uh, we wanted to investigate and start professional development in the Common Core. Um, when they came out in January or February, I think the state had their final version. I copied them all out, and it was a lot of paper, I understand, but it makes an impact. Here they are, they're not fake, and they're not just talking. These are our new Common Core standards. Start to take a look at them, because a lot of our after-school professional development will be geared towards the Common Core and ready for that implementation. Um, we also needed a pre- and post-test. One of the things that a school that is in a level-three situation and has not made AYP is you have to show growth, and I do believe that that's measured for us through the MCAS. However, for my own purposes, I wanted to see growth by using a diagnostic tool. So the tool that we chose is the grade and the G-Made. So every student in the building was tested using the grade and the G-Made, and they were not tested by their classroom teachers. They were tested by coaches and special ed teachers at each time. So that the data that we got, and again, and you know, Dr. Flea, I know exactly what you mean, it's not that anybody is going to give extra points or something like that, but the purity of the data, the integrity of the data is really, really captured when you have somebody else administering those benchmark tests, those pre- and post-tests. So that was important for us, because as a school, we've been working so hard, and when we do see growth, we wanna know that it's real. You know, we wanna be able, that if the state comes pounding through the door or whatever, and say, what have you done? Everything that we've done is research-based, everything that we've done is best practice, and everything that we've done has preserved the integrity of the data collection that we have for our students. Um, we have a uniform set of vocabulary series from Steck Vaughn, knowing that that particular reading series, and again, not only in Wyhame, but in other districts, because it's the same reading series I had in another district, it does not have the rigor that we talk about. So we supplement that with the vocabulary series that the curriculum department has, has given us. This year, we're also going to be able to have a phonics to support it as well, and we also have our extra help through the CARE, FDS, and volunteer session, many teachers volunteer. Can we back up?
Yep.
The evidence that we use, again, is we have that committee. We know it needs, it met today all day. Um, every, everything for that structured scope and sequence, that's considered in process. It's, a lot of good information is coming out of that committee. Um, good information that could save our district a lot of money. Um, we usually just buy the workbooks, and we just say, well, everybody needs the workbooks. Well, when you really sit down with some of the teachers, not all grades use those workbooks as dedicated as the younger grades, so, you know, for a lot of money, you can say, okay, we're gonna be saving some money, because these two grades only use maybe five pages. So that curriculum committee is coming up with a lot of great information for us. We have a student data bank sheet, which has the pre-, post-data on it. It also has the MCAS data on it. Our benchmarks are common benchmarks. Again, they are not administered by the classroom teacher, they're administered by the study skills teacher, and they're administered online. And we are continuing to hone those and, and make those better, and move, and that's something you always do with those benchmark assessments. Um, we do have those as, at catalogued and on file, and we share them between the buildings. Uh, again, the vocabulary books and our student numbers and of each program, the feedback from the tutors and the assistants give us feedback on how well our students are doing in those areas. Now, when we look at where we've been, it says, okay, now, what are we going to do this year? What's going to happen this year, because that's what you did last year? It begins to form our goal for achievement, and again, I broke the goal out into ELA and reading and mathematics in different goals for a very specific reason. That checkoff list, and I also wanted to make sure that it was understood that these are the expectations that our building will have for next year. Um, we want a creation of a building literacy team. It would be consisting of myself, the original ELA Alignment Committee, ELA Interventionist, and Instructional Supervisor. We need a hub of ELA specialists and people that talk about these things, look at the benchmark assessments, look at student data. So we need to start thinking more of a corporate get-together, so to speak, for ELA. So what better place to have that is in your own building. Um, our professional development of the Office of Curriculum on the new alignment and the Common Core standards, hopefully that will be taking place after school or whenever we have our days. Um, our continuation of the grade-level weekly meeting and agenda, it's a formalized agenda that must be passed in, and we go over the topics, and we go over common students, and we discuss things. Those are nice feedback sheets, and then we can go and visit certain, um, teams every so often. Design and implement per, student personal goal plans in the classroom. One of the things that we didn't do this year is we're always talking about our goals, our goals, our goals, and we kinda neglect the fact that we're leaving our students out of this process. Students have goals. All students, I do believe, want to succeed, and if they don't want to succeed, they need to be convinced that they do. That's really the goal of teaching. And so those students setting their personal goals and having them in paper and say, you know what? What is it this month? Where do you wanna be this month? And tell us what you want, and I'm gonna help you get there. And we, we form those goals. So that's kind of like a practice for children, that's a life skill. We all do that as individuals. We look to have certain goals that we wanna reach, and then we work very hard to accomplish those goals. And it's through those failures that we learn how to move a little bit better the second time around. Um, student instructional area, using the Steck Vaughn program will, will be just wonderful for us in both vocabulary and the, um, phonics. Um, continued professional development in the areas of differentiation and skilled intervention, that's gonna come for the RTI. Our teachers were very fortunate this year to take part in the differentiation, um, embedded professional development through the curriculum office, and they were also very fortunate to be able to get that really great training in the six traits, because that has really played out in the classroom remarkably well. Student writing is, is visibly, is wonderful, and many, many times, I get student samples that are beautiful, and we post them all over the building. We're proud of the effort that our students and teachers are doing in that area. Those diagnostic testing for, for grades for all students K to five, we're gonna continue that, that works well for us. Um, the parent literacy RTI workshop, again, we wanna bring our parents in, we want them to understand what's gonna be taking place and how we're going to do that, because sometimes parents can get a little bit upset, saying, well, they got put in this group, but now they're never gonna come out again. When we have grouping for intervention, they're not written in stone. The student does not stay in those intervention groups for the entire year. They're flexible and they're clustered. You may have students with 504s in that group, you may have students with IEPs in the group, it really doesn't make a difference. If you need help with the long E sound, that's your group, you're going in the long E group, that's your group, until you master that skill. And that skill needs to be mastered three times before you have an exit. So the formation of an entry and exit into a learning intervention group also needs to be formalized. We can't rely on somebody's subjective data, oh, yeah, he did fine on that, he's going, he's great, put him over there. No. What does it take to get into a very small tier-one, you know, tier-two or tier-three group, and what's it gonna take to get out? And those documents, and that protocol really needs to be inside that school, so that everybody's following, takes the subjectivity out of it. Um, we would like to have the acquisition of some level reading materials, um, all across the board, because as we know, those, um, Common Core, we're gonna be integrating everything, and that's gonna be a challenge for us. In the old days, we did it automatically, because for us older people, that's the way we were trained up as instructors. I think that we focused on that a little bit more in the pre-service training many years ago than, than we do now. Um, common use of that structured reading program by all special ed staff. New this year, if I do have a couple of students, and I have three or four students doing a Wilson program, I don't wanna send them on to the next grade where the special ed teacher may do a reading first. It's okay for that special ed teacher to cross over grades. We're gonna, we're gonna just cut that line out and say, you may go over to that third grade, which is something that hasn't been done before, just to keep the consistency of that child's learning, because we're talking about those, that highest-tier kids, those kids that need the highest intervention. Um, we're gonna be looking at the differentiation of our intervention groups. What we did this year is, when we did our intervention groups, we leveled them. So in other words, we took all the students that were, um, really solid in a skill and were ready to move on to a different area, take that challenge, and they were in one group. And then we had students that might have been a little bit lower, they were in another group, and then we had medium, and then we had students that need really severe intervention. And of course, you can imagine that the lower group had less and less students and had more intervention. Um, that way there, we are providing, um, that extra enrichment, because schedule-wise, that's the only way that we can fit it in. And personnel-wise, that's the only way that we can fit it in, given the restrictions that we have. We have our monthly placement meetings. We have a data section that is gonna be, um, coordinated through the curriculum office, where we'll be able to extract different charts and different graphs on our kids and get, and have all the data be at one site. The DIBELS Next program is something that we're going to get at the DECA school, we don't have it this year, we're going to get that this year, and, um, the Seaman's teachers have trained the DECA staff already, thank you very much for that. And, um, all of our students in grades K to five are going to use the DIBELS program. Uh, the schools that we visited for RTI use that K to five. Some of our teachers said, oh, K to five, we should only do it K to two or K to three. But when one of the instructors said, we can actually track a child's reading, because it's a little bit more than fluency now, through the kindergarten, through kindergarten, all the way through grade five, that's an enormous piece of information to be able to give perhaps to the middle school, because maybe this child's one of those children that's a slow starter, but that they gave up and they're fine by the end of the year. So that pattern of student growth would be there, because you'd be able to see it from K all the way up. So I thought that was interesting, and, um, since I like data, I thought that, that would be great. Um, again, the pre- and post-test, we're still gonna keep. How are we gonna check this stuff? Um, the progress monitoring data, again, data collection is key with RTI. There's no way around it. It drives everything that we do. So when we collect the data, that's the validation, that you know what, you've done what you've said you're going to do. Um, the differentiated group assignments, the different rosters that change during the year, that are flexible, and that have different highlighted skills, those are the things that we're gonna look for, and those are the things that are documented. Um, when we look at the students' ISPs, the IEPs, and our lesson shares, those, that's gonna be proof that we have to differentiate, because all of that requires almost like a small portfolio piece, which, again, I'd love to be able to get to that point where we're doing portfolios, but I don't dare ask for one more thing, um, in that building right now. Um, we're going to have our literacy team meetings and our weekly focused ELA meetings, and of course, our grade-level. Um, I also put in, what does it look like, okay, to have great instruction? You know, how do we know? I mean, I can say it a million times, but if we have a document in front of us that outlines all those pieces, we know what the expectation is. So when I do my walkthroughs and my curriculum supervisor does their walkthroughs, this is what I expect to see. This is the expectation, there are no surprises here. And so the accountability factor is high, it has to be. We don't have the, the option of not having it be high. And that's not to say that, oh, we're gonna do a gotcha, but we're going to be able to help and assist teachers. If they don't have this down pat, which is all the best practice, okay, for comprehension and increasing comprehension, this has to be embedded in here, because it's what you do every day, and that's how kids learn. This one is the same for math. When we looked at math last year with the corrective action plan, we said, well, what are we gonna do? Well, we have the everyday math program. We're going to look at it for the, from the state standard point of view, and we're going to look at it as a Common Core point of view. And in grade five, it was a little bit off, and there were some adjustments as we worked our way through the everyday math program. Um, it was, it's quite intensive, but the children don't really know that. The teachers know it, because it's, it's very different math, and I think it's great, and as Patty had pointed out, we have very high expectations, because we really just don't know any better, because we have this new series and we're just teaching, and guess, guess what? The kids are rising to the occasion. Um, it's really great to see, and they love it, and, and we love it as well. Um, the G-Made, which is the gray, is the math version of the grade, um, those common benchmark assessments, again, same thing with the CARE and the FDS, same thing with documenting those common benchmark assessments, that mid-year assessment that we give, it's a mid-year MCAS. And so that mid-year MCAS is an actual MCAS exam, it's only half though, and that tells us how our children are going to do when they are given the MCAS. It is, um, proctored the same way, everything is the same, um, it's handed out in bags same way, and we get a good idea of where those student weaknesses are. What was really interesting is that we, um, also gave the grade-two students at DECA a a mid-year exam. And we stole it from California because it was online. And it was really, really difficult. But they did a great job. And we got to see what they knew and what they could do. And although that's not something that we're going to track, but we wanted to see what their first take on a test, on a state test would look like. So we've got our own little experiments kind of working in DECA. But they did really, really well for half the year. And so it's, "Oh, you can do this, huh?" And then all of a sudden, as a teacher and as an instructor, your expectations are raised. And you kind of take away those low expectations. So the documentation will be the same in mathematics as it would be for ELA. Now, this is for this year. Again, if we're going to have a literacy team, we should have a math team. Because those same people should be talking about math all the time and getting that feedback from the staff and making sure that things stay fresh. And that if there's a problem anywhere, it's addressed immediately and we don't wait on that. Continue with the EDM professional development either through the Office of Curriculum or after school. We did that this year and it seemed to work out. And I know it's only a snippet of time, but sometimes that's all teachers need to kind of get themselves going on that. The weekly grade level meeting, benchmark test schedule was published this year. It's going to be published next year as well. And we also are looking to develop a building-wide common template for answering a math open response. Because a couple of our staff members went to Desi Workshop and they have some great ideas. Everybody's kind of using a different way to answer the open response. We'd like to have one solid way that children begin to learn in the younger grades and then they carry it right up through the older grades so that they're not confused on that. We want to integrate the use of technology into those lessons. We want children to start to graph. I'd like the children to start to plot their own DIBELS score so that they can start to see where they're going and how they're improving. They're using technology. They're graphing their own scores. I mean, it's kind of a neat way. With the idea of the iPads and the new computers that we'll be getting through the DECA grants, thank you, Ms. Miranda, for that. We'll be able to purchase new technology in our lab which has not been replaced in over seven years. So that's a big jump for us. We also would like some leveled readers in the mathematics section. Again, just kind of integrate that literacy piece. And again, the student goals, I think that's important. Our IMPACT statement. The series of Everyday Math is wonderful. Because when they say everyday, what they're really doing is they're giving students opportunity to show their mathematics skills, to apply what they're learning to solve everyday math problems. It's not just that you're learning this. There's that answer to why you're learning this. This is applicable and this is meaningful in my life because I can use it when. And that's when those little pieces come in and begins to click in students' heads that, "My teacher just isn't teaching me something. I'm actually going to be using this." When we look at technology, again, we'd like to see that integrated all through the content areas. And with the iPads and the student writers and the new technology lab, the MIMOs that we purchased last year, and if there's any money left over, I'd like to purchase some more this year. I see a lot of collaboration with the MIMOs. Teachers help one another and they share the different plans. So I'd like to see that continue. But with all the classrooms that we have, we're going to need to be able to purchase more, but they're pretty reasonable priced. This year, what we did do is we had chalkboards. And so we purchased what they call whiteboard skins. And they're projectionable, so you don't have to have screens standing in front. And our custodians, and thank you for them, they put them all up. And so they are now whiteboards in every classroom, which I think visually is much better for student learning. But also you can project on these whiteboard skins and it's much better. So that's a piece of technology that we always think of, but really it's very important if we're going to have this type of equipment. Would also like to get those document cameras. Because the money that we're spending on overheads that go along with the Everyday Math Program, because you have to buy these very special ones so they don't melt off in the copying machine, especially the newer ones that we have now. It's better to get the document camera and just put the book under there and have that be there. So the PTA was very kind enough. Again, they're wonderful people. They purchased the pilot of the Writer Laptop. Because the man had sent us out thirty on a pilot program and they were approximately, it was $200. And then at the end of the school year, he said, "If you're not going to buy them, send them back." And so I asked if we were going to buy them and they said, "No, it's too expensive." So I asked the man how he would like me to ship these back. And his response was, "I don't know. Nobody has ever shipped them back to me before." I said, "Well, we can't afford shipping back. You're going to have to send some type of label or something like that." So he emailed me afterwards and he says, "Will you buy them for $1,900?" So I went to the PTA and the PTA was thrilled and they did. So we got them for less than half price, which was a great find for us.
I have a card I'd like to you to negotiate.
In the science area, we have a great new science area in grades three to eight. And we've been monitoring that for compliance through walkthroughs, through key meetings and just kind of just asking different types of questions. It seems to be very well received. Students really like it. We would like to see that aligned, you know, and scope and sequence so that everybody knows what we're doing and what needs to be covered and the pacing that you need to have. It's not so much as you're trying to micromanage, but there's an awful lot to learn and you have 184 days to learn that in. And so what does that look like when I have a brand-new science book in front of me, when you're usually off a couple of chapters at the end of the year anyway? We also would like to purchase the leveled readers throughout the whole grade level, starting down at K as well. The monitors were given to us by Central Office. Ms. Miranda had a donation and we ended up with thirty of them, which was great. Because now I don't have to use the money from the other account to purchase monitors. I can just purchase PCP, which is nice and safe. We'd also like to have a Lexia Lab. And again, that's a conversation that we're probably going to have at an admin meeting because they've changed the software now. We have these disks that we use. I'm told we have forty-eight licenses for them, which means that forty-eight students can be using them at the same time. But now they have this other version that you go online. And if it goes district-wide, you get it for, I think it was, I don't know, $300. But if you don't, then it becomes $3,000. It's some convoluted scheme that they've got going. But it does sound like it's a better way to do things where it's online. It does track student growth and gives immediate feedback to students, which is very important. We also are going to have a team of teachers. There'll be two teachers sharing their iPad cart. And they'll record its usage in their instruction. And these are the type of teachers that would be very good at sharing their lesson plans that they develop around them. We're also going to continue with Kate Byrd and our Skyping was there. And again, the leveled readers and the alignment. I'm not reading everything because I don't think you need me to read everything. For community relations. We're not good with PR at DECA and I have to be honest with you. It's an area of growth that we need to be. We do fantastic and great things. We always have something going, but it just never seems to make it out to the newspaper because, to be quite honest with you, we're usually running around doing 50,000 different things. So I thought that maybe I might appoint like a PR person. Perhaps Patty would be our PR person. And she's usually volunteering for all sorts of things for us. And so there would just be one person that would say, "Okay." Because now we have a daily bulletin that goes out. So we have lots of activities that are going on. But we need that one person that's going to say, "We need to let people know about this." And we can go to the media and we can go to the... We usually have kept up with it on the website. But as far as the newspapers and the private channel that we have and that we use, I'd like to be able to share that a little bit more. This year, I did go on an interview television show with Dr. Videnovich. I would like to do that twice. I would like to do that once where we go and we talk about the school and things like that. And then once where we just have call-ins and we answer questions. Of course, we would have the ability to screen those questions. We wouldn't have to answer every question. But I think it's important that people be able to call in and get immediate response. And I think that would attract more people, you know, to be calling in. We still continue with the principal's monthly coffee, but one of the things that came up from my parents is they said, "Could you please have one in the morning and then perhaps one at six o'clock at night?" So we're going to have like a principal's tea or something in the six o'clock at night. Because some people work, so they can't make the ones in the morning. And we need to be cognizant of that and accommodate those families well that have a lot of feedback that they can give us. They need to be able to come into the building. So we're going to try to do that every other month for them. Our school council meetings, I think we have people that we can try to bring on board and keep the people that we have as well. And we'd like to see the PTA increase membership for meetings. We do have a great membership of the PTA, but usually at the meetings, it's the same fifteen people. That seems to be what happens. And again, we can put out that call and we'll get all sorts of members to help. But when it comes to making the decisions and having that discussion, there only seems to be like fifteen people. But if we put the call out to help, we'll get fifty. We're going to continue with the international night, the newsletter, the website. And we want that lighted sign, an info board, so that people driving by can see what's happening at our school. Because some people think it's a church. They don't really, you can't see the sign. And so they don't really know what it is. And they think something fell off on the top because that little thing is crooked on top. And one day I went into work and it was straight. And I said to my custodian, "Frank, I love it. You've straightened out that little thing." He says, "Oh, no, that's just the wind. Don't worry about it." That's never going to be straightened, but I think we need a sign that says it's a school. So we also are looking at the Community Business Mentor Program. Again, we have some very needy students. Our socio-economic climate at the DECA is changing. We have students that do not have an adult member that they can count on, on a weekly basis. Or that they have a good role model to see perhaps that there is a different way that adults and children interact or male role models or female role models. When I spent some time in Fall River, we had business members that would come in once a week on a Thursday at three o'clock. And they would spend an hour in the cafeteria with the kids, having a snack and playing chess or checkers or things like that. And that meant a lot to these kids. These kids really appreciated the fact that somebody stopped their day and gave them a half hour and 45 minutes. I'd like to replicate that program at my school to help some of our students who do not have that adult attention get some in a very positive way instead of in a negative way. And of course, our orientations. And we also would like to investigate the idea of viewing student work so that parents can come in and see what their children's work looks like and talk to their children, bring their child with them. Not so much as a formal portfolio because that sounds like a lot of work, but just a couple of pieces of work where a child is very proud of and be able to share with the parent. We're going to continue to support the ELL at the elementary school. Ideally, when we look at our ELL population, we're looking at getting 100% of our teachers being able to give these tests and be certified. In these areas, right now, we have at least one to two at every grade level, so we're covered with that. But as we see our population growing and becoming more diverse, we're going to need to do that. We looked at the data from the survey and I think that might be something that either I consciously missed or whatever. But I am going to jump back to that. Most of our data from parents and students in the 80s to the 90s area thinks that the school environment is safe and that transportation to and from the school is safe. However, we only had forty-nine parents out of the 717 answer using the online version. And again, the same calls went out, the same reminders went out, notices and things like that. It just wasn't something parents were into. Children, however, and Patty can attest to this, they did, every single child answered the survey in the grades and we got great feedback. It was not overwhelming as far as students being dissatisfied. I think the majority of the students were satisfied. There was some concerns about bullying. There was some concerns about somebody not being nice. But the numbers were very high that the promotion of respect and acceptance was inside the school. That was something that, you know, everybody felt pretty solid on, that that is the core value of our school and that everybody knows that and we do see that inside the school. But I think sometimes it just takes one or two people to comment on the outfit you're wearing or something that you've done to kind of just put that little cloud on there. The staff had concerns about discipline. And although we've put in after-school the tension, we don't have a protocol in place for discipline other than our policy book. We would like to see a positive behavior intervention model come to our school in combination with RTI. I think that would help out and I think that we would see our numbers on the discipline side go down. Sometimes I feel like it's a triage situation in this school. We have a huge range of behaviors and needs for all students. And clearly, something formalized in that manner is necessary. I would also like to look, and Mr. Luzon is going to have to block his ears on with his cleats. I would also like to look to subdividing out my K to five Learning Center. My Learning Center number is right now, last year, all of the grades were in one classroom and we ended up with 21 students. And I said, "This is ridiculous. We can't have this." So we separated with a K to two and then a three, four, and five. But I would like to even see that filter down a little bit more to a K one section, a two, three section, and a four, five section. Because even though the whole idea of that room is to modify and differentiate, personalities can set off other personalities. And some of the students that we're getting now are just, behaviorally, just are not the typical students that you'd see in that area. And obviously, we would like to have an additional classroom. I think there's a building one. No? Okay. I'll just speak briefly on the DECA's building. The DECA's building is old. It's still standing. And it has the original paint on the concrete and it still looks good. I have to be honest with you. It really does look good. We're making headway because we're replacing all of the rugs with linoleum and the school looks great. It is overcrowded, you know, it really is. With the enrollment, it's just huge. The other piece is that we have a leaky roof. And we didn't think we had a big problem, but we do. So we really need to address that because that's not getting any better. And what we've done is we've put some buckets in place and we're trying our best. But it seems, you chase the leak, I think, with the leaky roof. You fix it, it's great, and then all of a sudden, it's someplace else. And it's maddening because you didn't have it here before, but now you do. So I think it's one of those things with roof shingles. Although it's a tar roof, and Anna would know this more than me, I think that's just been a problem. So we'd like to get that fixed eventually again, but funding and everything is crucial. So that's it. That's what we're going to be doing at DECA. That's what we have been doing at DECA. And we're going to get better at what we do.
Thank you. Just have you, Jeff. Thank you, Chris.
Should I be standing?
You can sit or stand, whenever you like.
Thank you, Jeff.
Do you do teaming in a similar fashion, the way Joan does?
We do. We actually, in the third grade, we have one classroom that alternates between social studies and science, which I think is very efficient. which I think is very efficient because it cuts down on the amount of work that any single teacher has to do. In the fourth grade, we have two working teams, and then we have one self-inclusive, again, because of that five model. Somebody's always the odd man out. And that is also the same way in the fifth grade as well.
So, you tinker the same way Joan does in terms of you have an initially blind process, random process, and then depending on your insights, the insights of your staff, you tinker with the who goes with what teacher?
What we do is, we have parent requests. And I always ask parents, please do not request a specific teacher, but give me the characteristics of the teacher that your child will do best with. So, that's a whole set of different criteria that we try to match up right there. Right now, my teachers have completed a screening form, which collects data, academic data, social data, effort data, discipline data, and they fill out the form. I will then take that form, staple their report card to it, and then grade the students as to a level one, two, three, or four. And they'll be color-coded. Then what happens is that we will just take the fourth grade classrooms, let's use fourth grade as an example. And it's one, two, three, four. Everybody gets a one, everybody gets a two, everybody gets a three, and everybody gets a four. And we just keep doing that until all the children are placed. Then we take our special situation where one student has to be separated from another, a parent has requested a certain personality, and things like that. So, it's random, but the children are perhaps graded in levels first. To make sure that there's an equal balance.
The other thing I was fascinated about was this notion of developing some rigor, some template almost, for how children move in and out of tiers. Specifically, I guess, as it pertains to RTI. Can you talk a little bit more about that, especially who would be making the decisions?
Sure. Because the data collection on students is critical in the RTI process in determining where the child is placed and how they come in and out. The student data collection sheet, which is basically an Excel template that logs everything in. If we have a student that has an issue with math fluency, for example, math facts additions to twenty. That student needs an intervention for that particular skill, that very simple skill, math facts to twenty. That student would have to prove competency in that skill level three different times. The final time being with a curriculum coordinator in order to move out of that intervention group. Then we can assume that, yes, this child has.
So, the teacher would certify the first two?
Yes.
And then it would have to be proven to a second party?
Right.
But you wouldn't envision yourself as being part of that process? You would just be looking at the data as you saw fit, but you wouldn't be actually making the decision yourself?
I could do that, sure.
I'm not saying you couldn't, but are you suggesting you would be?
If I could have the time, I would be in there giving the test. I really like that part of it.
You may like that part of it, but I think your time as principal.
No, I know I can't do it.
Unless you figured out cloning, okay. So, that's, so the process would be, and where would the instructional leaders be in that process?
They would bring the data to that math curriculum team and say, here is our six-week check. This student's ready to move on. This is the data that tells me this student is ready to move on. Here are the documents, the artifacts that support that statement.
I like the discipline you're describing. I just hope it doesn't become too bureaucratic, if you understand what I'm saying.
I actually don't.
Okay. If there, if there's, you can sort of have data paralysis, if you will. And if you're waiting for too much, too much data, and if too many people are involved in the process, it becomes really cumbersome. And inevitably, that means the child is suffering as a result of adults not making expedited decisions. That's what I'm saying.
That's a really good point.
The only other thing I wanted to comment on, and I know you did it briefly, but objectively, when I look at the school climate survey, I was floored. Forty-one, forty-eight percent of the teachers expressed satisfaction with the school climate, meaning less than half. Fifty-one, fifty-six, fifty-seven percent indicate they are satisfied with the school's safety. Fifty-four percent indicate they're satisfied with school discipline. That's a lot of dissatisfaction on three key areas.
It is.
What's going on?
Twenty-eight teachers answered the survey. So, approximately fifty percent of that twenty-eight were dissatisfied. I, we did boil down, what I did for an intervention is I made a template. And we took each survey question, and we met for approximately six weeks, each Monday, determining, this is what we said was wrong with our building. How are we going to fix it? And so, the teachers sat together and came up with ideas on how to fix it. The safety one, because it was perplexing to me that the parents think it's safe, the kids think it's safe, but the teachers don't think it's safe. And the teachers didn't think it was safe because of the where-him childcare door being open during the morning time, where they felt people could just walk in. And that certain parents would walk their kids down to the classroom. That's what most of it came out to be, as far as the school climate. The data doesn't correlate to the attendance rate. Because usually, if you have data that's that low, you would have a higher attendance incidence. You know, there'd be a lot of absenteeism, and there isn't. We have a very good attendance rate. We have a ninety-five percent for the instructional staff and a ninety-eight percent for the support staff. So, are there disgruntled individuals at my building? Yes. Are they at every building? Yes. You must remember that I am holding people accountable. And we are working hard, and my staff is doing an excellent job at working hard. And some people will go along willingly, and some people will go along because they have to, and perhaps not happily.
Finally, and I could easily have asked the same question of Joan, so I'm not just isolating you with this question. When you contemplate the challenges in front of you and the resources that you will have for next year, is there a mismatch? Will you have all the resources, organizational, people, whatever, to meet the challenges?
No.
You will not?
I will not.
Could you, could you, in as much detail as you like, talk about what's missing for you to achieve your goals for next year?
One of the things that Deaconess had to do, as well as every other school had to do to close that budget gap, is we had to give up a first-grade instructor. Our numbers would have put our first-grade instruction somewhere between sixteen and seventeen per class, which is actually ideal for first grade because that's a very important grade where children learn to read. The numbers will be going up now. In a school that's not making AYP, it's in, you know, the serious situation that we're in, that's kind of scary. I would have liked to have had that opportunity, perhaps, to have those children be really solid, especially with RTI coming in, really solid on their ground. The other thing that you have to think about is that you do have, at times, seven hundred and twenty students inside that Deaconess school of varying degrees of ability and exceptionalities. There are two administrators inside that school, myself and Mr. Adams, and only two. Is it sometimes daunting? Am I gonna tell you that I don't work twelve, fourteen-hour days? No, because I do. I probably do the job, and I'm not patting myself on the back. It's just what it takes to get the job done of a person and a half. But that's what it's gonna take from all of us to get that school up and running, so that's what we do. We'll complain later, if there's no time to complain right now.
I just gave you the opportunity.
And I did my, I said my piece, but you know, that doesn't change things. The bottom line here is, is we have to move forward. And the more time we waste on things like that and feeling sorry for ourselves and licking our wounds, the less productivity we're going to have.
Do the two halftime instructional leader positions that you will have next year, do you see them as an asset in terms of trying to meet your goals? But you still need more? Is that what you're saying?
I don't, I looked at the posting, and from my understanding, I think that their position, and again, this would be open to my administrator and my directors, I believe they're there for evaluation purposes and not necessarily to be able to assist the AP or the principal in the daily duties.
I think that, I think that's a fair statement. Their focus is the classroom.
Right.
They are an extension of your instructional leadership. If I'm answering that question correctly, at least that's the way I, so I think your assessment is correct. So, what I'm hearing in summary is you anticipate losing a teacher that you need, and you find yourself and Tim being pulled in too many directions, and it's taking a toll.
Well, I don't think, I don't think I'm looking anywhere for.
I wasn't?
I think I'm holding my own. I think Tim's okay, too.
Yes, I certainly think you're holding your own, and I greatly appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, Rachel?
I just would like to comment about like the mentorship and possibly like an after-school, non-sports-related thing. We had that as kids growing up, and it was just, I don't know if you can incorporate both, but I know it wasn't for the whole school year. They would be in like little segments, six-week segments.
That's exactly what we set up.
People would come in and teach a skill to whoever signed up for whatever they wanted to learn. And I know my mother, she years taught sign language, and she always had a huge group of kids that logged doing it. I just, my mother. But, you know, I remember making a pillowcase, and it was just such a silly thing, but it's such a strong memory for me. And I wasn't a sports kid, and, you know, to have that opportunity, and like you said, there are so many kids that have nothing and no influence, that nobody to go home to, or I just think that's such a great thing. And I really, really hope that that can.
We do, too. We hope that it can. And again, I understand.
Something to teach.
I learned how to sew at my after-school program, and it proved very beneficial, you know. When I had my children and you didn't have a lot of money, I could always sew, and I did, so.
We did something, and I'll try to remember it with pillowcases, but I'll come in and teach it if you need.
Oh, thank you.
But I think it's something to grade for both the schools, if we could do something like that. It is, it's that lighter, more socialized, positive social time for kids. And I hope we can maybe incorporate some buses and stuff. I know back in the day, we didn't have that, but, you know, we could do that.
That's key, those buses, and the PTA is very supportive with that.
Absolutely, it's great.
Thanks for, for just all of the work and effort that went into this plan. One thing that I really liked about it was how you put kind of philosophical research statements in it and then applied it to the school. I think it gave me a really good sense reading through this of where you're coming from and backing it up with data. But I thought that was a nice added touch to this. That would be great to expand on. When talking about, you know, one of the statements that you make, of course, caught me back a little bit, which was, you know, taking away those low expectations, that sometimes teacher might, a teacher might fall into that rut. You know, and I don't know if that's a constant struggle, but are you, is that something that you saw when you first came in? That there was this, I guess, this thought in the school that there are low expectations in the school? And then the teaching is, or the testing is what?
No. And I, and I want, I want you to understand where that statement is coming from. Our teachers use their core materials to instruct. The core materials don't ask higher-order thinking skills, questions. They don't ask essential questions. They don't ask questions that we want to be able to ask. We're following that book, which becomes their curriculum. And so, that is very common at the elementary level, where we have our curriculum books and we follow our books. That's why the alignment piece is so important, because it takes us away from that. It purposely takes us away from this teacher's manual and brings us to looking at the lesson. And I believe those questions will be in place and things are scripted. If you look at the Everyday Math Series, it most certainly is. These are the scripted questions that you ask. These are the questions that you ask. You anticipate student response and difficulty, and you have yourself prepared. Once we're at that level for instruction, okay, we're home free. But that's something that takes a little bit of time and experience with a curriculum that supports that. And so, we're getting to that point, which is very exciting.
All right, great. With that, what is the, and I think this is across all the elementary, what is the expectation when it comes to the amount of time students spend at home by grade level doing homework? What is the expectation from, you know, is there even an expectation in kindergarten? But definitely, what is it for first, second, or fourth? Like, how much time?
I think the policy menu says, is it ten minutes a grade?
Ten to twenty.
Ten to twenty a grade.
It's in our addendum, the student, elementary addendum.
Okay.
The little book, you'll get that in the.
Pretty soon. Okay, great. So, ten to twenty, so each grade you go up by ten to twenty minutes?
Right. And so, the most, I think, is an hour, an hour and twenty, hour and twenty.
But there's actually a question on the student surveys that they fill out that asks them, how much time do they spend? And of course, most of them are whatever it's supposed to be, but you've, you have a little handful all the time that says two hours or more, you know? Just those kids who just struggled with their homework, whatever, but that is a question. I mean, but nothing's really abnormal. It's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I don't think it's overly rigorous on the homework end, because homework is meant to be independent. It's great if you have a parent or another adult that is helping you with the homework, but many of our students do not. So, homework is meant to relate to your lesson, but also be able to not be frustrating and be independent.
Right. And the reason why I mention it is because when you talked about the tests from California that you saw online, and I love it. You know, any way that we can see where our students are at it at some certain time. But what a great opportunity with kind of getting that kind of information by sending things home and then pulling that data back in and seeing what's happening. I don't know if, you know, if that's a possibility for the homework. When it comes to the school improvement plan, just some comments, there's a lot of information. And I can understand that you want to make it very clear to everyone, especially the teachers, this is what we're going to do. I'm kind of worried about the next year's kind of report out of how you did, because it's gonna double the information on here. But it's great. I'm able to see, I can see it, what you're trying to achieve there. The only thing that I think in the measurement side is that at any opportunity, as you're reading the statements, if there is a way to maybe put things like, you know, staff completion of RTI, professional development using district rollout, basically, how many, how often? Just constantly asking your question through that, because I think that helps set the expectations with the teachers of, you know, is it gonna be one, or is it gonna be, you know, every month or every week?
Right, that needs to show.
Yeah, so going through the measurement, I think that will go a long way in kind of getting buy-in to the plan. And then, just like the other one, as more discussions happen around Power School and the rollout, I just think that if we can make this happen this year, it's gonna go a long way in what you're trying to achieve on parent involvement and communication. I just, you know, we hear great things from middle school and the high school of parents really, you know, looking, you know, looking at that data and being able on a daily basis to take a look at what's going on. So, as soon as that's worked out a little bit more, integrating those into the plans would be great, that goal into there. Besides that?
Thank you.
Christine?
Hi, Dr. Sylvia. How are you?
How you doing? You're a new principal. And I think that you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
But as being a new principal, you inherit certain traditions and also certain landmines that have been strategically placed in your building. I have some concerns, and I shared some of them earlier. The rate of response on the part of the teachers in the professional surveys, I think, is appalling. And regardless of whether fifty percent of them are satisfied or just reasonably satisfied, I think it's indicative to.
satisfied or just reasonably satisfied, I think it's indicative to, because I think it's indicative to a, a systemic problem. And you didn't create it, but unfortunately you're in a position, you've got to solve it.
Yeah.
The, I think the systemic problem is the fact that because it is a system and because it is integrated and interrelated, that one action leads to another action or lack thereof, or a lack thereof, because not acting is also action. So I think that if we're going to really concentrate on what is going on in the classroom, that you probably might get some relief from the teacher leaders that are going to be coming on board. Also, whenever possible, collaborate and accentuate the positive, not only for the kids, but for the, for the staff. When the parents responded, the 49 parents responded, again, I gave you some ideas on that, when you get a bunch of parents together, hand them a piece of paper.
Yeah.
Did, did you hear anything about rigor?
No, no, actually I hear quite the opposite most times at DECA that we're asking too much of them.
Really?
They don't have time for their sports.
That's really kind of what it boils down to. We hear a little bit of, I, I might have one or two parents that say.
They don't have time for their sports? What does that mean?
No, if they have the homework.
If they have to do the homework or if, if they have, if they didn't finish their classwork and the teacher will say, well, you need to finish this at home, it, it becomes an issue. That is more of the problem that, that I would have at DECA. The one or two students that might, their parents may say that there's not enough rigor, we have differentiated their homework, their in-class work to take care of that and that's worked out fine. I also think that the clustering of the intervention, students by skill and by level has helped that because they do have an opportunity to be on the higher level. But then you need to be careful of the instructor that's in that classroom because it's not grade level. You're teaching above grade level, so that has to be really monitored and watched as well.
Right. And again, not to, not to beat a dead horse, but I mean, I think that you can draw certain conclusions and you can look at certain indicators in terms of the culture of your building. And I think that it can all be, it can all funnel through all right, what happens in that classroom once the doors close. So like I said before, you probably might get some relief from the teacher leaders, but I think it's a daunting task to, to really develop a, a systemic approach and to develop a learning organization within your building, all right, that's going to benefit everybody. You as an administrator, the teaching staff, and ultimately the students. Music in the morning, how's it going over?
It's going very well.
It is?
We, we've only had a couple of staff complaints.
Oh, really?
It, it has to start at a very specific time. If it's a minute late or whatever, it's, it's not very good. And it should start at the correct time every day, for that consistency, just like the pledge and the moment of silence, that routine, you know, those rituals really need to be in place. Regardless if I have a hysterical parent, that still needs to continue. So we need to work towards that. And, and I agree with, with the school culture. A very wise woman told me that it's going to take a few years. I am asking more of my staff than probably anybody has and they have delivered.
Well, I'm not criticizing, I'm not making judgments. I'm just saying there are certain, certain, certain things that you look at can, can be, you can draw conclusions and use them as indicators to other things because it is a system. So I'm sure they're all working hard, but I know you're working hard. So you're modeling that also. Now, the, I love the idea that you're making the students a part of the process. One of the things that I did late in my teaching career, probably after I had you, was on Friday, on Friday I would say, okay, write me about your learning. Every Friday they took 15 minutes in my class and they talked, talked to me or wrote to me about their learning, good, bad, or indifferent. And I would go home and over the weekend I would read them over and it'd be just one paragraph, but you'd be surprised what I learned. I know that's at the high school level, but I'm sure that you could do something that was even remotely the same to get them involved in their own learning. And I think that that's, that's key. The idea that they're setting their own goals and so forth, and I think that that's wonderful. Pacing guides, pacing guides, benchmark, benchmark assessments, they're all good, but again, I like to look at that whole system collaboratively and not only administering the assessment, but also evaluating the results. But again, you may, you put down some research on page 23. I'll read, I'll read it. It says, best practice, and this was about math, indicates that when computational fluency is rapid and efficient, student understanding of higher order mathematical ideas is increased and that these two, fluency and understanding should be developed in tandem with each other. So I'm just saying, pacing guides and benchmark assessments, although they're good, they really can't become the bible because then they do get in the way of those two working together. So I'm just, I'm just saying, it's not the bible.
Right. There's, there is a little piece that, one of the things that they taught us at our RTI fitting meeting is that if you put a 15-minute block of math fact work in the day, just 15 minutes, that that will help students immensely. So I'm trying to look at that schedule as critical as well.
And again, collaborative evaluation, I think it's so important, especially at that, at that area when you do those benchmark assessments and so forth. I think it's good to have as many eyes looked at as possible. And the last thing is, what is your assessment of specialization in grades four and five?
I think it's a great idea. I think you make experts in the field. The more you deal with your lesson planning, I know that when I was an instructor, it was math and so the, if I was trying something out the first class, it got better the second, it got better the third. You know, by the time that fourth class came around, you became the expert. And then that colleague sharing, what did you find out, what happens when you taught it and this, that's even, even more rich. So I think that practice makes perfect.
Right.
And that it really gives you a lot as an instructor to get that feedback immediately.
Well, I really appreciate your effort. I know how hard you worked in over at DECA.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your, your effort on this, on this report. It was very comprehensive. And anything that I can do to help you, don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you, Jessica.
Well, you didn't fail to, another fantastic job. So you and Joan Siemens, the council, and all your teachers. I did have the same feelings. I won't get into what Jeff did on the, the teacher's side on the survey, but what was the percent that turned that back?
I wasn't supposed to pass that in. Nobody else did.
Ah.
Mine became transparent because I, I messed up on my form. But the percentage.
No, 28 teachers.
28. That's okay. You don't have to look for it.
It was not, it was, it was low. All on the teacher's side, it was low. On the student and the parent's side, it was not. It was, it was very good. But here again, I don't think that my teachers understood where this information goes because when I told them, they were a bit, they didn't understand that piece.
They know now if.
Yeah, oh yeah, they know.
But you know what? Honesty is honesty. You know.
Hey, it is what it is.
Right, that's right.
I'm going to deal with it. I'm going to make some changes and we're going to do some things and it's going to get better. I can't hide that and I'm not going to put it under the rug. It's an area of improvement that I need to work on and that's the major thing for next year and the rest of this year.
That's great.
On the out-of-school, in-school suspensions and all of that, I thought you were really exceeding everyone, but that comparison is against the district, which includes nine, 10. So, I mean, if you're looking at comparisons to mine, it's pretty much the same. I'd like to see that instead of the whole district because that makes it look like, you know, a little misleading. Is there any way you can get the 62 students in band to continue that when they get to high school? I think that, I think that's fantastic. So I want to give you compliments on that.
Well, that goes to our, our teacher. It's, he is incredible and he just is magnificent and, and just so good with the kids. And interestingly enough, his wife was my band and music teacher when I was in, in Swansea. So I've had the benefit of the hearts for quite a long time and they're just both fantastic.
You may want to save that question when Mr. Gilmore comes before us at our next meeting about taking those children from the elementary band to keep the massive.
Be nice to mentor them with somebody who is in the band at the middle school.
It's kind of frustrating when you see the high school band with 12 kids. And I know there are a lot more that, you know, I'd like to see some of these extracurricular activities carry all the way through. Can you tell me a little about the, how the Skype program is going? I'm so excited about that.
I'll tell you what I know. I can't get into the technology piece. It's a little area that I'm not really yet great on. But what happens is on a schedule, the students in Cape Verde communicate with the students in Ms. Sims' classroom or Ms. Spinad's classroom and there's conversation back and forth. I have never experienced being in the classroom. I just know that all the students dress up on that day and Ms. Sims dresses up that day. So it's a very special day and the kids love it and it's very exciting. And that has been going on, I think, since the beginning of the year. But I could ask Ms. Sims to invite you the next time that happens.
Did you have a sponsor for that?
Yes, I'm Ms. Osborne and I acquired that, that program. And tomorrow morning, we are going to Skype again with the school, the schools in Los Angeles. We have had many, not, we have had many problems with the technology in Cape Verde and the, and the internet in Cape Verde. However, we don't, we don't give up. We keep on going back and, and so we have conducted two lessons at far, which you can view on our DECA's home web site. You can see them right there. And so what we did was we went on email and we did our lessons on email, which is not the best situation. But anyway, tomorrow is our last try for another Skype session and we've got all the equipment set up. It's all ready to go and hopefully we'll have a good connection tomorrow. So if you're, if you're around and you'd like to attend.
Thank you for doing that. That's fantastic. Very nice, Joan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I make one more comment?
Just one.
Just one.
You know, we were talking about extracurricular, we're talking about enrichment activities and so forth and so on. And I can't help but think, looking back on my own academic history, way back in the Stone Age, when I was in grade school and middle school, there were after-school programs for music. There were private lessons. There were music lessons. There was shop after school.
I know.
Believe it. An elementary school with a shop.
Wow.
There was, there was activities, there were all kinds of arts and crafts activities after school. And so there was always something going on after school, not just sports, there was art, several art programs, ceramics, all going on after school. And this is going way, way back to the 50s. So, you know, it's really unfortunate, isn't it, that here we are in the 21st century and we can't even offer our students things that I had back in the 1950s. Think about that. That's a pretty sad state of affairs.
It's, it's worse to think that when kids go home, they're, they're watching TV or playing video games. I'd rather have them with us, having fun.
Dr. Rabinovich, anything to add?
No, I think both the elementary principals did an excellent job tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Joan, you, for your information, late in the second period, it's one, nothing Bruins. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Let me just ask for the benefit of the people at home, tomorrow, the international night, what time does that start? 6:00 PM?
It's posted on our website.
Okay. And then the.
Bring a dish of your choice.
Okay, so 6:00 PM international night at the DECA school, please bring a, bring a dish. And then the awards for the fifth graders is?
1:45 at Minute Forest.
1:45 at Minute, thank you.
You're all welcome to attend if you.
Yep.
Thank you, Joan. Thanks, Christine.
Thank you.
Next up, policy review. Recommendations, policy review, Rachel?
This will be quick. The last meeting we had, we only had a few policies to look at. The majority of any of the changes that we made were just in the most part. The first one we looked at was the distribution of information. You should have the new policies. This was voted unanimously to accept the idea.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Next.
The next one was emergency closing.
Okay.
Again, it was basic cleanup on this. You have the changes with the new, the new policy. Literally just adding a D here and, you know, doing that. It was also again, accepted with the changes made unanimously.
Moving. Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Unanimous.
Okay. The next one we looked at was animals in school. This one did create more discussion only because the original policy and the, and the need to add things in were all into one policy. We split the policies up to animals in school and then service animals so that we could have, you know, that the animals in the classroom is, is a different function than a service animal. And I think that there was one school that there was a service animal coming?
Not yet.
Not yet, but there is.
It's in the works.
So we wanted to make sure we had the policy and we, we, so we ended up having to, we separated the policies and then, so there would have to be a motion to set each separation. So the first one would be the animals in school policy.
Let it to, Jeff?
Question. I assume that this is referring to live animals.
Not just children.
Full-legged animals.
So I guess. But my point was, I can imagine in a science class, for example, they might have a dead animal, a dead frog, a dead snake.
I know. We used to get to do that when I was in school. I don't think they get to do that anymore.
My point was, is there any point, is there any reason to classify this as live animals in the classroom as composed, compared to just animals in the classroom as a policy title?
Um.
Or are we?
I think, I think then you're not having to deal with the same issues that you have to worry about. A dead animal's not going to bother you anymore.
That's my point. That's my point. If a science teacher wants to bring in a dead animal, should this policy prevail?
I mean, depending on the type of dead animal, you could, you could end up with like health issues and, and things like that, absolutely.
Bottom line is, you want this to.
We actually never actually discussed that in science.
Do you want this to apply to live and dead animals?
Take care of disease.
Yeah.
I would say so.
Yeah, you could, I mean, you could add it in. I would hope that you don't have teachers that scrape the things up.
Well, no, I'm thinking of an animal, an animal.
It could happen.
Dr. Rabinovich, can you imagine, for example, an animal being brought in, in formaldehyde, for example? So it's clearly, if.
The first sentence might come in that.
You mean regarding the.
No animal shall be brought into school without prior permission of the building principal. So it would have to be under permission. So if they did so choose to bring in, say, something made dead or whatever, they, they still have to have permission from the principal to do so.
I don't know. I may be making much about nothing. I don't care. Dr. Rabinovich?
In many of the lower grades, we no longer allow any dissections. We go with virtual dissection rather than bringing in the formaldehyde.
And how about the high school?
Carcinogens and so forth. I'm not quite sure at the high school, but I know that when I was a biology teacher and we would buy them from reputable companies that came with all the precautions and so forth. so that they did not have disease and so forth, so...
Okay. Bottom line is, you don't think we need to distinguish in this policy?
I don't think we need to distinguish.
Okay. I would, that's fine.
No need to beat a dead horse, so to speak.
Well, I don't know, Joan. We used to get cowhands from the local farm.
I did all that just to set Ken up.
Move except.
Second. Discussion. Any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Then get the...
Unanimous.
Service, the service animal policy, because that is an issue that is coming in the future.
That's just guide dogs?
Yes. Those are service animals with, that are very specialized training.
No changes on that?
Well, it, it doesn't have to be a guide dog, though. You could have service animals under other circumstances.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
If there's a therapeutic need for the dog.
It could open the door.
Well, it's animals.
The other thing, too, we have to realize that there's, I mean, there are other service types animals. And that is something we made down the line, have to make. And it is something, I mean, it can be a little scary, but it is something that they have. And we have to, we have to accept that.
Move except.
Second. Any further discussion on the policy? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls. Unanimous.
The last one we looked at was admission of transfer students. And the only thing that was changed on this was the title. Students transferring from Commonwealth Charter Schools. That policy came to really focus in on kids coming from the charter schools. So we just changed the title. The policy stayed, stayed the same.
The Department of Education asked that we have this policy because of some examples of students trying to commit to public school from Commonwealth Charter Schools, and there were difficulties about grade placement and so forth.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Jeff?
It says, I'm just reading the last sentence. "Students transferring from Commonwealth Charter Schools shall be, shall be subject to the graduation requirements of the school district." Then it says, "may have certain graduation requirements waived and may make up certain graduation requirements." Who's doing the waiving?
It would be the principal of the school.
Does that need to be stated? Or is it a given?
No.
I think it's a given, because that's the only person...
He can't waive a graduation requirement.
Well, when you have somebody that transfers in and hasn't been there for three years, you have to... So yes, we do do that currently, and that's the person.
And it's the principal?
Yes, it's...
And it's, and it's standard practice now, so it's... Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Did, we already voted on that one.
No, we didn't.
We have, we have motion in second.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls. Five, zero, zero. Thank you. Very nice, Joan. Report of the chair?
That's you.
Just briefly, as I stated earlier, two, maybe two weeks ago, the school committee voted five, zero, zero to award the superintendent another three-year contract. I'll just go over a couple of things. And like anything, it's public knowledge that anyone that requests that can send a request in writing and get a copy of it. Effective August 1st, 2011, the annual rate salary will be $147,000. And that is the same salary that the superintendent had last year. The superintendent did not aspire any increase in his base salary. In July, the superintendent will be evaluated through a process that we have. And at, at that time, the superintendent could be eligible for compensation anywhere from zero to, to $5,000. On the rating scale, we had some changes, zero to 64 before it used to be a $1,000. That has been eliminated. So the, the next step for the superintendent would be, if he's rated in the category of satisfactory, 65 to 79, that could result in a $3,000 increase. Eighty to 89 is $4,090. To 100 could result in a $5,000 increase. But as I stated, the contract is for the same base salary that he had last year. Longevity, which I understand is, comes with years of service. It takes into account years of service and unused sick days. The superintendent is entitled to an annual, annual longevity payment of $9,140, provided he completes the full year of each year of that contract. Vacation during each contract year. Dr. Rabinovich will be entitled to 30 working days, exclusive of legal holidays and annual vacation. And any advance notice needs to be given to the chairman of the school committee. And no more than 10 days may be used during the school year. No more than five consecutive days may be taken without approval of the chairman of the school committee. And also, annual vacation days may not be used, I'm sorry, annual vacation days not used may not be accumulated. And that's pretty much the brief overview of the contract. I can say that we're very happy to have the superintendent. There's a lot of good things going on in, in the school. And we're fortunate that we come to an agreement. And hopefully, over the next three years, we'll continue to see improvement. We're in a tough situation like a lot of districts. And it's, if we had the resources financially, there's a lot more things that we can do. And I don't know if anyone on the committee would like to make any comments or...
Yep.
All set?
Thank you, Dr. Rabinovich. And that leads right into your report.
Thank you very much. Under the, in your package, there is a document from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, dated April 29, 2011. And it talks about the need survey that was done at all the buildings in Massachusetts. They sent out a team of architects that looked at every one of the schools in Massachusetts and rated them on a number of indices. On the third page of your document, you can see across the top, we have the year founded, last renovation, enrollment, square footage, square feet per child, number of classrooms, students. Then there is the building condition, the space utilization, and the general environment. And you, you've just been given one page, this page 105, because that contains Wareham. And you can see that the two schools that have, under general building conditions, a rating of three, one being the best and four being the worst. So the rating of three would be for the John W. Deaconess Elementary School and the Minet Forest Elementary School. And that's why we believe both schools need expansions and renovations. But the Mass School Building Authority will only allow us to have one building at a time on the list. And when you look at the last column, general environment, you'll see that the Minet Forest School has been rated a three, where the Deaconess is at a two. So that's why we decided to go with the Minet Forest with our application. Mr. Chairman, there is a question on the right?
Yes.
Just real quick, the, the West was also rated a three when it came to building condition?
Yes, you're, you are correct. And in fact, we recently have decided that there's something that can't wait and we need to do an update on the handicap ramp that is coming apart. So we will continue doing small maintenance projects to try to keep things from degrading further. But we really do need an improvement of facilities. And in fact, under, when we get to talking about goals for next year, one of the things I would like to do is a space need study. Where we look at all of our buildings and we talk about where we need to be, short-term and long-term. So that is that particular item. I also gave you a copy of a letter we see from Mitchell Chester, the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education, where he has approved our tech plan as of May. The tech plan can be found on our website. And it goes from this year through 2014. And that is the blueprint for what we are trying to do as a district with technology. I also have in the group the invoice for the veterans, the going to the cemetery and Memorial Day and putting the flags. And you can see that on both of these, there were no charge. So after last year, where we had a visitor who was unhappy with the fact that one of the field trips was combined and children went to the beach afterwards and so forth and got charged for that part of it, we made sure that we have zero charge for the planting of the flags during Veterans Days and Memorial Day. So I just wanted the group to see that, that we took care of that problem. Chip?
Just quickly back to the Wareham Tech Plan. What are the implications to the district for this plan by, by September?
If, well...
Is, is by September a meaningful time?
It's, it's a five-year plan.
Okay.
And there are things like, for September, the number of Class C computers, they have different ratings, A, B, and C. So they asked us to try to get rid of all of the Class C computers that they feel are not up to being able to handle the newer software and so forth. So as part of our expenditures on technology, that's one of the things we're doing. Labs at both the Deaconess and the Minet Forest, we are updating because, again, the software and the hardware won't allow students nor teachers to do what they need to do. So that's some of the things that the tech plan does, as well as trying to get to a point where we're integrating technology into instruction. And the iPad, for instance, wasn't really part of the plan because that came up, as you know, during budget conversations. But that will help us with the integration of technology in classrooms. So...
Okay, thank you.
And the last, was there another piece of paper I missed? No.
You had the invoices were the last part of that?
Yes. So I am all set. I don't think, no, we don't come out, because this is just a recommendation of this group at this point. Because we're not asking anybody to sign.
Rhonda?
Quick question for the superintendent, through you?
Yes.
We heard, I think, some, I don't know, gray area on whether capital items are not coming out of the school improvement plans from the elementary schools. Is the, the capital plan for the school, I know that's different than the overall capital planning document for the, the town. But, you know, things like the Deaconess sign, you know, are there the, the upgrades to West? Are those on a separate plan that we're kind of managing and looking at?
Each building has its own maintenance accounts, where we plan for some of these, as well as when we have savings in our heating and energy accounts. So for instance, if you walked up the aisle in this building where we used to have, Dr. Silver will remember, the ramp, that flooring developed bumps and cracks. So all of the tile has to be picked up and put back down. It's an expensive job, but it's a safety job that has to happen. So we were able to find the funds to get that done this year. Windows at the high school that have not been able to stay open because the springs in them have gone, we're getting fixed this year. So every, we build our own internal plan, things that are less than $100,000 that we plan on getting done. The roof at the high school was another thing about getting a fix. Not completely redone, but a fix to it so that we won't have to cancel games because of water coming into the gym.
Yeah, I think my point is just as we're hearing these, that it's a constant reminder that those things should go on those school plans.
A- absolutely.
Okay.
And they, when we do the budget, that's when principals have the opportunity to add those capital items that we then... There may be, like at Minet Forest, the fire department has wanted us to replace the complete fire alarm system, which is a very expensive project. So we have done parts of it. We fixed horns in the hallway and so forth. But we haven't taken the whole panel out, which would cost us $50,000 because we're hoping that that will be taken care of when we do the renovation. So...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Work in progress.
Okay, any other business? I'll start with Jeff.
There was a Cape Cod Collaborative Board meeting tonight, which I was unable to attend for obvious reasons. They will be voting on a, on their FY12 budget tonight. As a member of the Budget Finance Committee, it was part of my job, along with three other representatives, or two other representatives and the executive director, to make recommendations to the full board. There are three things that you should, well, really, two, two things that you should be aware of that is different from the, from prior budgets. One is that they are attempting to set up three operating, excuse me, three reserve funds at the collaborative. One for a general operating reserve account, perhaps similar to the reserve account that the town has, which at the town level is $135,000. It's not clear how much will be allocated to the operating reserve account for the collaborative. They are also trying to set up a capital reserve account. Once again, it's not clear how much will be put in there. And finally, they are looking to set up a reserve account to start to get into compliance with, I think they call it GASP45, but basically it has to do with retiree health insurance. Their goal is to put one and a half percent of their wages expenses on a monthly, excuse me, on a quarterly basis into this account. The money to do that doesn't really exist, but they're going to work to do that. FY11 will be a small surplus. FY12 will also, is also budgeted to be a small surplus. And the final thing I should tell you is, yours truly was particularly concerned that they were budgeting to lose conservatively over $50,000 from Medicaid billing. I was, I was adamant and ultimately, apparently prevailed, that they get out of the business of Medicaid billing because that's literally almost twice, well, twice as much or more. Then they collect just the membership fees. They were going to be wasted, wasting by being in the business of Medicaid billing. The goal now is to get out of the Medicaid billing by the end of this calendar year. So that, that saving, whatever that is, let's say they saved $50,000, can be used, in fact, to support the reserve accounts that they're trying to set up. And I think that's enough unless anybody has any questions.
No questions?
Okay.
Any other business? Rachel? Rhonda?
Just one thing. I think the superintendent, you meant to mention it in your report. But if folks at home are wondering why there are laptops and, and items up here.
You're right, I forgot that.
New, this meeting compared to last, that the school committee has decided to... ... knew this meeting compared to last, that the school committee has decided to, with Michelle's help, to go green, and now all of our materials and packets are being emailed to us, just so we are no longer printing out 50 to 75 pages each a week. And so we're going to, I think, tweak it from week to week on what's the best way to have the material in front of us, but you probably will be seeing more laptops in front of us. We're not playing solitary. We are looking at our material.
Or watching the Bruins.
Or watching. We don't have internet in here.
Exactly.
I'd be seeing what the score was right now.
Don't get mad at me, Rhonda, but the school committee did not decide this.
Okay, thanks. You're absolutely right. I apologize, Dr. Sol.
School committee did not decide this, and I don't like it, just for the record.
Okay. But the trees do.
Okay, that's fine.
It's not completely green, we are still using electricity, so.
Any, any other business?
Whatever, we're in that one.
No. Oh, Jeff, do you want to mention anything about Division VII?
Thank you. Why?
No, you go, you go.
Um-
You've been, you've been more involved in it than I have.
I am the secretary of Division VII, which is, which is a Massachusetts Association of School Committee subdivision. Every, throughout, the Commonwealth is divided up into divisions. Division VII is Cape and Islands and Wareham. I don't think anybody else on this side of the bridge. In any event, we met for our annual meeting. The focus of the annual meeting was, I guess primarily, how we could make Division VII more relevant to its members, and we tried to get legislators there to talk to. Not a single legislator showed up. We talked a lot about the teacher evaluation regulations that have been promulgated by the Commissioner of Education and modified by the Board of Education. And beyond that, I, I think we had the usual good meal from Upper Cape, which we paid And, and I think it's, it's, it's fair to say that the struggle is going to be a resource struggle, which is to say, every, every district is facing some of the same problems that we're facing. The only difference is, many of the other districts are losing students at a much faster rate than we are, some dramatically so. So that will be interesting, and that, of course, raises the question of regionalization, which is already taking place on a cooperative basis, and whether it will be in any way pushed on some of those districts remains to be seen. Did I miss anything, Cliff?
Well, the only thing that I'd like to add to that is the fact that they gave us a position, their position statement, which was very, very interesting, and if you want, I can forward it to the rest of the board, on the, the proposed educator regulations on evaluation, and tying it into MCAS, and who knows, and who knows what else. And basically, what the position paper points out very, I thought, very, very well, was the inconsistencies with the proposed, with the proposal, the DESI proposal, not only inconsistencies, but the illegality of some of the provisions of their proposal. So I thought it was, I thought it was well done and well presented, and if anyone wants it, I'll make copies of mine and give it to you.
I will be attending a state presentation on these very regulations tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 in Middleborough. Are you, are you going to be there as well, Barry?
I don't think so, because I've got that, the high school awards.
Right. In any event, I will report back.
I don't be there either.
I will report back on, on that. I know a couple of our teachers are going to be there as well, who are on the RTTT committee. It's a, and it, it's an opportunity for us to make comments, and I assure you, I will be making some.
All set?
Thank you.
Anything? Any other business, Jesse?
No.
Dr. Rabinovich?
Yes, sir.
That concludes the regular portion of our meeting. We'll be, I'll be pulling the board to go into executive session, to approve minutes of May 25, and also for discussion of collective bargaining. We'll be coming out of session only for the purpose of adjournment. Rhonda?
Yes.
Dr. Sol?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to go look for the students, open up the room so we can get started?